Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees. And please, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may notice that we have an absence tonight. Supervisor Walsh is in attendance at the Michigan Township Association Annual Meeting and could not be here tonight. Therefore, our first order of business is to appoint a chair for this meeting.
Make motion to appoint Martin Brook as our chair for this evening. Support?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Six to zero. Thank you very much. I look forward to our meeting tonight. So, welcome, by the way. And I noticed a lot of faces that are familiar to me here and some faces that aren't familiar to me. So I'm going to take a quick moment to just talk about the meeting tonight and where it's going to go. We have a long agenda, but the part I want to highlight are that there'll be three opportunities for public comment. Our first opportunity is item number one, which is a general public comment. We're happy to hear any thoughts you have on your mind about any item at all. And that's the first item up. There's also two public hearings, so there'll be two more times for public comment. If you have a public comment on one of the public hearings, which is the Special Assessment District 426 and Special Assessment District 427, that's the time to comment with regard to those. Certainly, you're welcome to do it, speaking of public comment as well. That's your call. But there will be a special hearing for each of those items, and so there's no need to address us at the general public comment. But those that want to, please come up, state your name and address, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, please. So the first order of business is public comment. If there's anybody here who would like to address the board, you're welcome to, and please just come to the podium. They're right there, and let us know your name and address.
My name is Jim Cleland. I live at 5885 Wing Lake Road, and I just want to make a brief comment regarding the watercraft ordinance. I'm part of the Wing Lake Board, and one of our board members, Tom Barnes, has provided feedback to you. I'm not going to get into those details. But I wanted to thank Martin, thank the whole board for the process that you ran as we were working with the DNR. Not only the process you ran in trying to coordinate it, but also educating us so we could participate. I'm not sure we would have done anything different. I think it was very successful. And I've just got a couple of comments I want to share on behalf of our group. When we got started, we asked for three things, and we ended up with one, and it was just four words. It was slow, no wake speed. And first of all, we'll take that because it does give us the ability to enforce some poor safety habits or somebody that's not operating a motorboat in the right fashion. But our reaction was that that was soft and seemed like it was inadequate. And the one thing that we would like to present to you tonight is we would like for you to pursue either an appeal, or I'm not sure what the term is, but some special recommendation that might take place months or a year from now. And from our perspective, the one thing we'd like to achieve is to prohibit internal combustion engines. That seems like a freebie. That seems like common sense. It would take one sentence to do it. I don't know why they didn't give us that, but there's just no need for an internal combustion engine on a speedboat or a jet ski to be on our lakes. And I know that you're talking to 10 lakes, and they may have different opinions, but you know what our opinion is. We would rather not permit internal combustion engines on our lake. We also realize that, to my knowledge, you haven't made a decision yet on how you're going to approach this, and we'll leave that in your good hands. But in the event that either all lakes or a subset of the lakes choose to try to appeal this, we would ask that we try to prohibit internal combustion engines. I guess that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Kopsis. I live at 1025 Timberlake Drive on Gilbert Lake. I would just like to echo my neighbors' comments regarding the watercraft controls. We are pleased, to some degree, that we are addressing the issue of speed. We also strongly, on behalf of all of the members that I've talked to, have, we all unanimously support adding the comment of no internal combustion engines. And I guess I'm here to listen to the direction, and I'm here to take any requirement that you may need of the 101 homes that I represent as the board for Lone Pine Estates that surrounds Gilbert Lake. I stand prepared to do what you need to support making sure that the homeowners get what they unanimously are asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Intakley. I reside at 1550 Georgetown Drive. I echo the sentiments as well on the lakes. My aunt and uncle used to live on Hammond Lake and definitely not big enough for internal combustion engines. And we used to row around on the lake, and it was good enough. My public comment is about page 251 and the water and sewer details through this year. If we add back in depreciation at 2.3 million per last year's audit, the Water and Sewer Fund generated $8.5 million in gross margin excluding capital expenditures. There was no discussion when rate setting on capital expenditures. I don't think we spent that much on capital expenditures, especially considering the restricted assets that were approved earlier last financial year. The other thing I would like to say is I received the response from Freedom of Information Act regarding water and sewer, and talks about setting rates based on a low level of water consumption. And when you do that and you actually sell more water than expected, you generate more revenue, and that seems to be the case here. Yet, none of that was discussed in either of the prior meetings. And they recommend that that should be applied to the future rate increases. So not sure why we increased rates with that 8.5 million, even if you take off 4.5 million in capital expenditures, that leaves 4 million. It's a lot of money. And going into the year, we had 24.7 million in capital reserve funds on 31 million in annual revenue, so doesn't seem right. Regarding the, I actually think we could probably reduce rates by five to eight percent. We'd be fine. And then regarding the Treasurer's Quarterly Report, we were told that the Healthcare Retirement Trust would be broken out by fund on an accounting basis. That's not in the report. That disadvantage is water and sewer as well. Assets were garnered over the last several years to improve water and sewer, but also improve the fund balances. And water and sewer doesn't have to pay in anymore because they're 100% funded, or at least they shouldn't. Also, on the cash side, what dollar value is in the accounts is directly attributed to water and sewer, and what type of interest income was generated on those accounts. That money wasn't separated out either. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Alberts. I live at 6410 Losser. Monday, I sent a letter to the township supervisor, clerk, and the safety path coordinator about the new construction of a safety path from Corton to Maple down the west side of Losser Road. Twenty-five years ago, an urban planner drew a path on the west and the east side of Losser. In the 2023 HRC drawings, residents were assured that very few trees would have to be removed. Now, after we were promised that the stand of oaks at Cass and Losser would be spared, many trees have pink dots on the trunks, and these mature trees are in danger of being removed in a short fashion. A three-foot landmark oak north of Cass is also marked for removal. In front of my home, I have two 18-inch-plus pine trees that are protected under the tree ordinance, but I fear that the cutting of the roots on these trees, along with my tulip tree and a weeping beech, could cause them to die. These trees provide shade and other vital environmental aspects to my living space. If they're damaged, they can't be replaced in my lifetime. Other concerning aspects are that paving green space adds to heat absorption and reduces the drainage on our property, not to mention that concrete is in all by itself a pollutant. The nearly $1 million being spent on this project might need a last-minute review to determine if both east and west sides of Losser truly need a safety path. About a decade ago, Oakland Hills removed more than 100 mature trees to make their golf course a Link-style course, as they were originally designed. While this was difficult to watch, it's part of the game of golf. But as you pass by Oakland Hills today, there are extensive fences around all of the trees at the entrance to the nuke to prevent them from being damaged. So it's clear that everybody realizes, or at least they realize, and I realize, the value of these trees. Perhaps it's time to have a review of the real need for this million-dollar expenditure before it's too late. So I'm kind of asking for a stay of execution for the trees, and could the Board of Trustees possibly review the need for this safety path? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else for public comment?
My name is Jim Parker. I live at 5611 Shadow Lane on Gilbert Lake. I'd also like to echo the comments of Paul Kopsis, one of my neighbors on Gilbert Lake, and the other people who spoke on behalf of a desire to keep internal combustion motors and boats off of our lakes. The neighbors that I've talked to on the west side of Gilbert Lake also have unanimously been displeased with the DNR's decision to not allow for the ordinance on the means of propulsion. They were unanimously pleased with getting the speed restrictions. I'd also would be in favor of including Gilbert Lake in any appeal should one be, should that be the decision. Also, we would like to reapply, and I echo what Paul said, that myself, my neighbors, unanimously, every single person I've talked to on this issue around Gilbert Lake is willing to do what's necessary to support a board decision, should it be to appeal, reapply, or whatever it takes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else for general public comment? Okay, great. Hearing none, I'll vote yes. Oh, yes, please. There you go. I saw you just snuck in. Thank you. Glad you made it.
Wasn't your public comment was the best.
This is your time.
Thank you very much, and I do apologize for being late. I just came back from Lansing. Hello, I am Natalie Price. I am one of five state representatives for Bloomfield Township, and I just wanted to come and do a quick legislative update and let everybody know some of the legislation I'm currently working on that I think you'll be interested in. So this is my first term. I should address my comments here, shouldn't I? Thank you. This is my first term in Lansing. I come from Berkeley City Council, so familiar with municipal government and a member of the municipal caucus there in Lansing advocating for municipal control. I was a high school English teacher, and now I'm there working on school aid, fighting for equitable funding for education, DHHS Budget Committee, higher ed, and then tax policy. Those are kind of my main areas of influence. My constituency, House District Five, includes a little bit of Bloomfield Township. It also includes most of Birmingham, and then it goes south. Berkeley, where I live, includes Oak Park, Royal Oak, a little bit of Royal Oak, about half of Beverly Hills, half of Oak Park, and then Detroit. Half my district is northwest Detroit, so Eight Mile to 96, Shafer to Southfield. So I have a very long, narrow district, a very diverse group of constituents, and I am there in Lansing doing my best to advocate for the issues that matter most to my constituents. And that's a big part of why I'm here, to get to know your local representation and the constituents, to let people know that I'm there to fight for the things that you care about. So right now, the reason I wanted to come in today is I am just right now collecting co-sponsorship, collecting signatures for a bill that will update our vehicle code, making it so that can, our noise restrictions on vehicles can be enforced. So this came to me from Chief Gruy, Birmingham Police Chief. He said, "This time of year and all through the summer, the noise on Woodward is just really unbearable for a lot of residents." And I know that. My constituency, again, includes most of Birmingham, some of Bloomfield Township close to Woodward, also Berkeley and Royal Oak right along Woodward. We get often constituents writing in and saying, "The noise on Woodward is hurting me," right? Whether you bring home a newborn baby, or you have to sleep for your job, or we've had constituents trying to heal or on hospice. We've got veterans suffering from PTSD, and paths are impacted. And we know that the noise on Woodward has gotten dramatically worse over the last five years. The ability to modify your vehicle, to have it sound like gunshots, to sound really loud, has become more and more accessible and more and more popular. So the change that we are proposing is to clean up some of the vehicle code, to get rid of some ambiguous and contradictory language, to make it more enforceable. We are also significantly increasing the penalties. So if you have intentionally modified your vehicle, you're going from a $100 penalty up to a $500 penalty for the first offense, $1,000 penalty for the second offense, $1,000 plus a misdemeanor for a third offense, is what we are proposing right now in this draft. And the police chiefs that I've been talking to believe that that will be enough to discourage and to have consequences, to curb some of the excessive noise. Another change, if your vehicle is making loud noises because of neglects, because you haven't had time to fix it. Right now, you just have the $100 consequence, but our proposal is that you get the $100, or $500 consequence, but then the ability to come and have your vehicle checked, just like if you have a broken taillight, to show that you have had it fixed, and then that $500 can be waived. So we also think that, again, we're pointing people to solutions to get their vehicles checked, to get their vehicles fixed, and the only severe consequences are coming from repeated offenses of folks who have intentionally modified their vehicles in order to make loud noise. We're working with prosecuting attorneys, local law enforcement, the courts, all the relevant stakeholders, making sure that we make these bills the best that they can be. I'm eager to share them, and I'll give you my contact information, make sure that you guys can see the drafts of those bills. And we're hoping that that will help you take care of being able to enforce the excessive noise that we experience on Woodward. So I know I can't take questions. I just wanted to share that update and let you know that I'm available. Again, Natalie Price, House District Five. And if you look, State House Representatives Natalie Price, you'll be able to find easily online my cell phone number. My cell phone number is available, also my office number, my office email. So please don't hesitate to reach out anytime.
Great. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, yes.
Oh, great. I'd love to take questions.
Representative Price.
Yes.
We're glad to see you come to a meeting here, and as somebody who used to sit in chairs like ours as a local official.
Yes.
I'm sure you can appreciate the sort of doctrine of, you know, local home rule and being closest to the constituents and knowing what's best.
Sure.
I invite you to work with Clerk Brook and myself. We're working on a bipartisan fashion with Representative Donnie Steele and State Senator Jeremy Moss to advance legislation to protect the wishes of people who live on lakes. And so if we, right now, the burden is on the people of the municipality and the people who live on the lakes to prove that there should be regulation. We want it to be reversed. We want the burden to be on the DNR to prove that there shouldn't be. So I'd love to work with you on it. I know Martin will as well, and so.
And I should have mentioned Sam Steckloff, who I know you're very familiar with. She's my seatmate on the House floor. We sit next together three days a week. We spend a lot of time together, and she has been keeping me updated. So I do feel pretty up to speed on that issue, and I'm happy to help.
Yeah, she came to speak at our DNR hearing, so we're very appreciative of her help as well, and I'm sure, you know, we'll loop them in. I just, I rope the Republicans, he ropes the Democrats, and try to get some legislation done.
Yeah.
We communicate with Sam Steckloff today, so.
Yeah.
We'll be in touch.
Great. Happy to help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else for general public comment? Okay, that wraps up public comment. Our agenda item, we'll move on to the next item. Just to approve the board minutes for April 28, 2024. They were in the packet and distributed. I do have one change here that was pointed out, and everybody has a copy on their diast seat here, which was to remove the roll call vote, which is on page eight, which is incorrectly duplicated from a prior item, and you'll see how it'll show up in the minutes. So other than that change, if there's any other change, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, six to zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Treasurer's Quarterly Report presented by our Treasurer, Showstack.
Thank you, and good evening to everybody. I'm Treasurer Michael Showstack. As the board knows, the Treasurer is statutorily required to give a quarterly report to the Board of Trustees for the township's investments for the quarter, and so I've done that here in the packet. I provided a report that is broken into three categories of investments, each of which has different rules and regulations. Excuse me. The first category is our operating funds, which we use to cover day-to-day financial obligations, invest our surplus reserves, et cetera. We keep about $2 million in checking accounts, and the remainder we keep in several types of investment vehicles, including liquid money market funds, U.S. Treasury and Agency Bonds, bank CDs, and local government investment pools. In one such investment pool, MI Class, which you all remember we approved back in January, I moved $45 million from the JP Morgan Money Market to MI Class, where at MI Class it is going to be earning about 5.4%, about 30 basis points better than JP Morgan. And so that excess amount of interest that we earn by moving it from one fund to the other came out to about $34,000 in the quarter. I'll back up so it doesn't get too much reverberation here. Given where interest rates are and where they're expected to stay probably for the remainder of this calendar year, we can expect similar performance over the next three quarters as well. The ending balance of our reserves are 94 million, which is 22 million higher than the last quarter, due mostly to the collection of our annual tax revenue and is our high watermark for cash balance for the year. We earned 1.3 million in interest last quarter and over 3.8 million in interest for the fiscal year, which I'm happy to report is more than four times our original budget. Right now, we are earning the highest returns in money market funds because of the inverted yield curve, but over the next year, I'm expecting to see that trend reverse, so my plan is to start transferring money from the money markets into longer-dated treasury bonds to lock in the higher rates, similar to the way that people locked in low rates on their mortgages. The second category of funds are the fiduciary-directed investments, and I manage the investments in those funds with our investment advisor from Mariner. These are our defined benefit pension plan and retiree healthcare, or OPEB, fund. Both plans are invested in a mix of asset classes, including fixed income, equities, and real estate. I'm in the process of meeting with fund managers to make investments for our allocations of real estate and our alternative investments. With the board's approval, we consolidated the retiree healthcare trust into one trading account instead of the way it was before with the departmental subaccounts. Going forward, I will be able to show the data with much more granularity, and the Financial Sustainability Committee and our retired employees' healthcare benefits trustees meet quarterly and will be doing so next week to review these investments and provide advice. The final category are the defined contribution retirement and deferred compensation plans for our employees. While I oversee in power, who's the custodian of these funds, each participant, meaning our employees, can decide how they want to invest their own funds. We have a relationship with Schwartz and Company, here located in the township at Maple and Losser, and they work face-to-face, hand-in-hand with our plan participants to manage their investments in a style that works for them. So as I stated in the memo, the overall equity markets were higher for the quarter, and so our investments with equity exposure did very well. In the fourth fiscal quarter, meaning in the first quarter of this calendar year, Dow was up over 6%, the S&amp;P 500 over 10%, and the NASDAQ over 9%. All in all, a very strong quarter. And if anyone is excited and learning more in detail, you can come to our Financial Sustainability Committee next Thursday, May 2, at 8:00 in the morning, to learn more. And with that, I will submit the report and ask 30 questions.
The question's just for the board at this point in time. Thank you.
So do we need to have a motion on it?
I guess you could make a motion.
I'll just save it.
Thank you, Michael, for comprehensive presentation, and I'll make a motion that we approve.
Support. Does motion support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to accept the report, six to zero. Okay, our next item is item number four. Representative Price, I'm glad you're here. As a township, so as you know, different from a city, we don't own our roads here, and the roads are owned by the county. And we're going to discuss Special Assessment District for, two of them, in fact, for the Bloomfield Village area. This is the method we have to fix some of the crumbling neighborhood roads that residents can bring up to the township board, and Jennifer Worthman is going to handle this. This is our number, item four, a public hearing of assessment concerning Phase Two of Bloomfield Village's public, Village's road paving, Special Assessment District 426, and presented by Jennifer Worthman, our praiser. And after this presentation will be the public hearing for folks to comment on SAD 426. And just a reminder that if you're in SAD 426 and you have not yet sent an electronic email or a letter to object, or you want to object, now is your time. And so don't miss that opportunity if you plan to object. Preserve your right to appeal. Okay, Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'm Jennifer Worthman. I am with the assessing department here, and I do handle the majority of the special assessment tasks within our department. We are here tonight, so Assessment District 426 is going to be what we refer to as the blue phase for everybody who is trying to keep up with the colors. So this is going to include part of Judson-Bridway Bloomfield Village Number Two, Judson-Bridway's Bloomfield Village Number Four, Number Six, Number Eight, and part of Judson-Bridway's Bloomfield Village Number Nine. Just a map to reiterate our area that we're in. This is our blue phase. We're looking at redoing 2.62 miles of public road that's going to include Ardmore Drive, Burning Bush Road, Glengarry Circle West, Half Moon Road, Hamilton Road, Hupcross Road, Overhill Road, Roland Drive, Tuckahoe Road, Williamsbury Road North, Wooddale Court, and Wooddale Road. Project consists of pulverizing the existing road and placing new bit mist asphalt pavement four inches thick over the aggregate base with full-depth cold milling asphalt removal. Again, this is a full demo of the existing road, and it is going relatively deep considering the layers that the road commission is going to have to deal with. We're looking at total curb and gutter removal and replacement. Replacement because while you can't see them, the curbs do exist in the village currently. You just can't see them. Total underdrain installation with sanded shoulders as well. Minor drainage improvements will be made to reasonably assure drainage of the pavement, and all shoulders and disturbed areas will be covered with topsoil and sod. They are looking at doing a maximum five-foot approach for the existing driveways to provide a smooth transition from the newly paved roadway where necessary. Our COC received bids on March 26 of 2024. Our lowest bid was received from Ajax Paving Industries. The final project cost came in at $8,073,592.92. The final assessment comes in at $42,270.12 per full unit of benefit, which there are 191 parcels with a full unit of benefit in this phase. This was $200 over what our estimate was, so this came in right on par for where the road commission expected it to be. Project can be financed over 15 years. Interest is to be determined after we sell bonds. We are looking at your interest rate will be roughly 1% over that bond rate. Treasurer Showstack will kind of touch base on that a little later on as well. Tonight, we are requesting Tonight, we are requesting to hold our public hearing number two. We are looking for approval of our resolution number three and move forward with authorizing our COC to proceed with the project.
Great, thank you. We've all seen this before, and so now is the time for us to have a public hearing. Anybody who has an objection or a comment with regard to the project, which is Phase Two, SAD 426, welcome you to come to the podium and make your comment. After that, we'll bring the conversation back to the Board and Jennifer Worthman to discuss. Is it with regarding SAD?
It's a general question.
So yes, when you come up, you're welcome to ask a question. We won't respond immediately. We'll respond at the end.
It's just a general question. We just moved here a couple months ago. We're learning about this now, so it's really new to us. We came from Birmingham, where everything was taken care of, more or less. So the statement of.
Just by the way, for the name and address.
Oh, yeah, we're on 527 Cranbrook, North Cranbrook, Angelo Paracus. The full unit of benefit, we're trying to figure out what that means in this whole definition. We're not on a road that's getting work. We're next to a road. So we don't know if that means we're on a full unit of benefit, or we are, we are. We're not, we're in 527, but I figured I'd bring it up now because it seems like it's in both sections. That's all I have.
Okay.
Just trying to figure this all out.
Understood, thank you. Good question. We'll address that when we come back to the Board. Any other comments or objections?
My name is Mark Intocley. I thought there was some very good information brought up in one of the public comments that appears in the Board Packet regarding this SAD, in particular, failure to demonstrate proportional value increase in property values. I thought that portion of the public comment in the Board Packet was very interesting. $42,000 is a lot of money, and it's about a five, sometimes more than a 5% increase. And also it impacts the, the SAD will impact the ability to refinance on homes because that's included in the valuation and cash flow on financing and mortgages. So if anyone's buying or selling, that will produce opportunities to sell the house. They also adverse impact on property values, disparity in property values, absence of empirical evidence of objective benefit in the analysis as well. Hopefully, all of these, since it's in a written form in the public comment, will be addressed. They also cited that was this project ever considered to go in coordination with water replacement or sewer replacement projects to get added benefit and added value? Those properties are fairly old. The system is fairly old in that area. And tearing up roads twice and rebuilding them twice, that's a lot of money, 8 million. So, and whether it's done now or later, I think those should be considered, and we don't know when that, those capital projects will come in and water and sewer because it was never discussed or even mentioned during the water and sewer rate-setting portion of the event. So hopefully, you guys will address those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just another reminder, I think I said it, but this is our public hearing, Phase for SAD 426. And any comments about this, we're welcome to address the Board.
I just have a question. I don't understand what you're asking.
Just please, please use the microphone so we can all hear you.
Okay.
Thank you. Your name and address, too.
Mary Jo Wall, 3624 Tuckahoe. The wonderful treat that goes like this. I have a question about the curbs and the drainage. How does that work?
So we'll address the questions at the end of the public hearing.
Okay.
And so if you've got any others, just let us know, and then we'll address.
We do have Mark Metzler here from the Road Commission, so we can have him come up.
Okay.
It's Greg Fletcher, 3370 Burning Bush Road. Probably a question more so for Road Commission, but as I understand it, each phase has to be voted on. It has to pass by a majority vote. So if it turns out that a phase doesn't pass, you're not going to have the entire village roads repaired. Whatever phase doesn't, majority vote is still going to stay in the same condition that it is right now. Secondly, every vote is going to be bid out by a different company. So the roads are going to be repaired by a different company every time. So how are we measuring or making sure that there's consistency in the products that are being used if the bids and the repairs are all being done at different times? Now, I understand it has to be done at different times, but we're talking about different companies coming in every time to do different sections. Secondly, there's no funding to repair or replace the 350 trees that are currently scheduled to be cut down because of this repair. So I know we're working on that with the village to find funding, but want to make note that there's money to cut them down. There's no money to put them back, which will certainly impact our home value. Definitely the way the village looks. A lot of the reason a lot of people want to live in the village right now because of the canopy trees. Everything that right now is currently in the easements is tagged, so we know what trees are in certain conditions. But right now, there's 350 scheduled to come down. Hopefully, we can save that and lower that number. So more questions really for Mark, if he can address it, but thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Beckerleg, I addressed you all back in August. My name is Alex Preike. I live at 711 Wooddale Road. You may have had a chance to review the email I sent out this morning. I know that today you'll ratify the assessment rule for the village roads, but I'd like to make an appeal to you, the same that I made in August, that you reduce the assessment against my property to one-half unit of benefit. I also request that you do the same for my fellow petitioners, Barone, McCardle, and my next-door neighbor, Mary Lou Mabye, who's an 88-year-old widow who lives on a fixed income, and remarked to me when we were discussing this that the assessment is more than she paid for her home. I've spoken to our assessor, Darren, who said that this is procedurally possible, and I believe in August, Mr. Beckerleg, you said it was also legally possible. I believe there's also a precedent in the township for some properties on these road SAD rules have historically received a half unit of benefit. You've already received our formal appeals. The crux of them is that the property that I own and some of these other properties are in the lower end of the value spectrum, and that we will not be receiving proportional value. We won't be receiving a proportional increase to our property values. Is it the people that own million and a half, $2 million and $3 million houses? So it's very likely that this will increase the value of my property by far less than the $42,000. Please honor my request to give us this relief from this unfair and burdensome assessment. I pray for this amicable solution, that the role be amended at this meeting to a half unit of benefit for our properties so that we will not be forced to appeal to the Michigan Tax Tribunal. I don't wish to block my neighbors from making the improvements or saddle the township with the costs of the disproportionality which has happened in previous cases in Michigan. I also will make the point that by giving us this relief, it's not only more just than taking this to the courts, but it's also potentially cheaper than a legal battle for the township. The addresses are 711 Wooddale Road, 3540 Wooddale Court, 3545 Roland Drive, and 3365 Burning Bush Road. I ask that you vote on this tonight, despite the fact that Supervisor Walsh isn't here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for the public hearing on this topic?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Conley. I live at 555 Hup Cross, and I appreciate the points that my neighbors have brought up. I did not come probably as prepared as all of them with our notes, but when we think about the disproportionality for the homes that are under $1 million in the neighborhood, the taxable values, our resale, I agree that the roads need to be fixed, but I believe that there's a better way to do it without burdening the homeowners that are not able to realize the benefits of the $42,000. My question to the township is, is there any either SLAs or project agreements as to when the project will be done and if there's any consequences if it's not done in a timely manner? My experience with the township, I'm sorry, I'm shaking, has been less than desirable. I have no confidence in the township being able to do this project. You did our sidewalks two years ago, and I'm still waiting for somebody to come fix my driveway, which was torn up. I've been trying to work with the township regarding fraudulent permits that were pulled on our home. The township has walked away and says they have no responsibility. Well, we have a project that does not meet code, and numerous emails with Dirk, Danny, in face-to-face meetings have led to no resolution for our family. So the way, and as recent as the sidewalk project that is going on right now, to have the manager of that particular company come up to us and say, "You guys are getting ripped off at the cost of this project," makes me question, based on my past experience with the township over the past few years. So I ask for our property to be included in the list of the homes that are much under $1 million. And I'm also curious about what kind of governance there is around the project, what kind of project management there is. As you know, it's a huge burden to the homeowners to have it take place. I think the neighborhood is, I won't speak for anybody else. We all know that we're in desperate need of new roads, but at this financial burden and my lack of faith and confidence in the township and their ability to protect their constituents, I'd like to be excluded from the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments with regard to SAD 426?
Good evening, members of the Board. My name's Patrick Barone. I'm 3545 Roland Drive. Mr. Preike has already made the comments for me, but I wish to make them on my own behalf. I have filed a detailed written objection already. I don't see that there's a purpose in me reiterating any of that into the record at this time. I simply ask that it be incorporated by this reference. The only thing that I would like to add to that is that the request for relief, which was previously that the, that the special assessment be either denied or placed in abeyance until the village can demonstrate the appropriate level of due diligence to demonstrate the proportionality and the increase in value, that that request for relief be amended to include or in lieu of that, to amend the role so that the proportional value is decreased by, or the increase, the special assessment be decreased by 50%. I do think that that would be appropriate, considering the SEV of my home and the lack of there being a showing that there actually would be a value commensurate to the $42,000, $42,000 plus, as necessary as a matter of law. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments during this public hearing on Special Assessment District 426?
Just a quick one. Everything's already been articulated. Matthew McCardle, 3365 Burning Bush. I've submitted a formal request to the Board, the Clerk's Office, the Appraisers. So thank you for your consideration. I would just ask that I could get a formal response from the Board for the comments that I made.
Hi, I'm Kathy Weisenborn. I'm the manager in Bloomfield Village, speaking on behalf of our Board and actually myself as a village resident. The comments you've heard so far are in opposition to the Special Assessment District for the blue section. I guess I'd like to speak on a more positive note. First of all, I want to recognize this Board. You've always given us a fair hearing and recognize the hard work of our volunteers as we've tried to put this together. To Jen and Darren and the other township staff who have helped us as we've navigated this, the waters of our first SAD. I also want to thank the residents in both the sections, the blue and red section that we're going to deal with tonight. The ones that signed the petition, as well as the ones that got educated and had hard discussions and gave some thought to whether or not to support the SADs, and even those that decided not to sign the petitions. Obviously, the dozens of volunteers that spent last summer and spring canvassing the neighborhood, gathering signatures, having thoughtful conversations with our residents and trying to solve our collective issue of our deteriorating roads. And finally, I want to just thank all of those who worked on this project over the decades. It's been kind of humbling to talk to the people who were dealing with this in the '80s, in the '90s, and the two decades since then, bringing us to where we are today. And we wouldn't really be here without the benefit of their hard work. So tonight, I would ask on my, on behalf of our Board for your vote of support for the SAD. We've met all the requirements of the Special Assessment District policy. We turned in 56% support on our petitions for this section. We received unanimous support of this Board at your public hearing on this SAD in August, I think this one was. And the Road Commission has openly bid the project. Five bidders came in, and the bid came in pretty much spot-on the estimate, such that the assessment is changing by a mere dollar from what was in the petition. So it's a pretty darn good estimate. Thank you, Road Commission. So with that, I'll just conclude to say we need your support, and we'd love to have a positive vote so we can get shovels in the ground and start fixing our roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any, any other last call, last call? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment for SAD 426 and bring back here to the Board to discuss it. Maybe Mr. Metzler could join us here, too. I think, thank you. I'm glad you're here.
Good evening.
Yeah, welcome. Good to see you again. Did you have some notes, by the way? With regard to questions? Okay, I'm going to just give it to you then.
All right. To address the curb and drainage work that was, the question that was presented. So what we're looking at doing is we're going to come in, we're going to uncover that, the existing curb and gutter, which Jen mentioned previously. You can't see it this time, but there is concrete curb and gutter throughout the entire phase of Bloomfield Village. So we're going to come in, we're going to uncover that, we're going to remove that curb and gutter, and then we're going to reinstall that curb and gutter back in. So we actually hired a consultant to survey the entire phase, and we have profiles. So we've run, if you're not familiar with profiles, basically we take survey data, we create vertical curves, et cetera, et cetera, so that we know everything is going to drain properly. The drainage, as far as the structures in the road, we have it into our proposal to rehabilitate we have it into our proposal to rehabilitate all of those drainage structures. Again, the castings on the structures will change due to the curb. So the curb right now is a 30-inch curb. It's gonna go to a 24-inch curb, which means you're actually gonna gain six inches of driving surface on the HMA when we pave it. So with different phases, somebody asked about the different phases. So the road commission, it's important for everybody to realize, the road commission sets the standards and specifications when the project goes out to bid. We have a pro, a proposal book that's approximately 100 pages long. So any materials that are used, those specifications are governed by the road commission. We set those specifications. So the contractors are all bidding the same HMA, the same concrete, the same aggregates, et cetera, et cetera. And that will not change throughout any of the phases. So all of the contractors that bid this project bid per the proposal book, all right? And that will continue in the additional phases moving forward. So fortunately, when we bid at this time, we have two contractors, or one contractor for both phases. So Ajax, as we get into the next presentation here, Ajax also was the little bidder on Phase Red. When we set up the phases, we intentionally set the phases up so that it would accommodate multiple contractors, all right? So one contractor isn't in the way of another contractor causing any concerns or issues. All of the phases are going to be built so that each contractor has their own access and they don't need to be in the other roads that in the future may proceed down this path also. So as far as our trucking or anything like that, we're not going to be into any of the existing roads that are currently there. We're gonna stay within our project limits of each phase. The tree removal. So the tree removal was set up as an as-directed item. And it was done so intentionally. Also, the construction sequence was modified. So generally, in a construction project, we come in and we take out any of the trees that need to be removed ahead of time. It's usually the first operation of construction that takes place. Per the specifications that we put out, the tree removal is actually not to take place until after the edge drain has been placed underneath the curb. So we're gonna come in, we're gonna take that curb out, we're gonna put the edge drain in, and at that time, we'll make an assessment of what kind of damage we did to the trees as far as the root systems and things of that nature. So it's important to realize that we're trying to save as many trees as we possibly can. I will tell you that to save all of the trees there is, is gonna be impossible, okay? If you actually look, there is roots that are growing over the top of the curb that's currently existing. So there is gonna be some tree removal. Again, we're sensitive to trees. We're gonna do everything that we can to save as many trees as we can. The project timeframe. So basically, we have this project bid to start May 6th and conclude on November 15th. Also, when we sat down and we broke out the phases, we realized how much work a contractor can do. Hence the reason that we ended up having to break it into five phases in order for the completion. Because what we don't want to do is, we don't want to start this construction and have this construction go into the following season. So we want to try to wrap up everything we can. That being said, there may be some restoration that will need to foul in 20, in the spring of '25, meaning finishing up any sod or any restoration items like that. But the main infrastructure of the road will be completed by November 15th. Somebody asked in regards to completion dates. So in that proposal book, we have a start date that we have for the contractor. We also have a completion date that we set. That contractor is expected to meet that completion date weather permitting. So if they have 20 days of rain during the course of construction, then that date extends 20 days without incurring any penalty. Within the contract, there's what's called liquidated damages. So if that contractor does not meet those timeframes, then there is a per day liquidated damage that we charge them accordingly. So I think that was pretty much what I had for notes and questions that the residents had.
Okay, that actually, I think that covers mine too, other than the ones that probably are really better for Dirk or us here or Jen. But were there others that you guys sent your notes as far as items for Mark to address?
Well, I just, so Mark, you're just, I don't know, you didn't say it at the beginning, but you're with the road commission.
I'm with the road commission for Oakland County.
You're not a township employee or anything?
No, I am the SAD coordinator for the road commission for Oakland County. So I did the design. I will also be an instrumental part of overseeing the construction. So I will, for any of the residents here, you will see my face probably on a daily basis.
But these are Oakland County roads and that's why the road commission for Oakland County has jurisdiction, runs the project, our team, whether it's public works or assessing or treasury when it comes to paying bills, we all work in, to support you.
Correct.
Thanks, Mark. So Jen, was there something else you wanted to address with regard to the comments that came up?
I don't think so. The only thing that maybe we might want to touch base on.
Right.
Dirk, we had talked about maybe addressing the residents, individual residents' concerns with their home values versus our assigning a full unit of benefit. Can you maybe touch base on that?
Sure. In fact, I'll touch base on a few things. I looked at four or five letters and the themes are kind of reoccurring throughout, throughout all the letters. The first, the first point I want to make is with respect to allocating a benefit, that can't be based on the value of the house or the value of the property. The benefit is based on the actual benefit that the property gets. Admittedly, there have been times where we have assessed a one-half benefit and sometimes even smaller. I think we've maybe done a quarter benefit before. The general rule of thumb is, and we, we agonize over these decisions. We look at the maps of all the subdivisions and go parcel by parcel, usually Jen and Darren and I, to try to figure out what, what the appropriate level of benefit is. If you have frontage on a road being improved, usable frontage, and it doesn't mean a driveway, it just means a driveway could go there. If you have usable frontage on a prop, on one of the roads being improved, you get a one benefit. The occasions that we have given a half a benefit to property are circumstances where the property itself did not immediately rebut the improved road. Maybe they had a private easement, maybe they had a shared driveway, maybe it was a small private road. All of those things would, would tell you that because they don't have direct frontage, they should, they should have a lesser benefit. The four properties that were discussed today, and I apologize, I think the Hupp property would also apply. The four properties that were specifically referred to in the letter, we looked at that today just so we were prepared to address that tonight. And all four of those properties were either interior lots with direct frontage on a road being improved, or corner lots with at least one portion of the corner lot, and sometimes two portions of the corner lot, having frontage on improved, improved roads. So consistent with the policy that we've always utilized and that the courts have upheld, one benefit would be appropriate. We're not, we're not permitted to basically say, well, this house is worth $500,000 and this house is worth $3 million, so we give a bigger, we allocate a bigger level of benefit to the, to the more expensive, the more valuable house. That's not what the law in Michigan says. What the law in Michigan says is you've got to allocate the benefit based on the actual benefits being received by everybody. Now admittedly, when you do the analysis of whether there is a proportionate benefit to the property, which is a separate issue than allocating benefit, then the value comes in because you have to show that there's a rough proportionality between the amount of the special assessment being paid and the value increase in the property. So a less expensive property may have a smaller increase, value increase than a more expensive property. But as long as there is a proportionality, it doesn't, that doesn't come into allocating benefit, the units of benefit. One of the other things that was raised is, and it's, it's in pretty much all of the letters, is that there was no empirical evidence presented by the township establishing that reasonable proportionality between the amount, the amount of the special assessment and the value increase in the property that's gonna happen as a result of the improvement. And that's not necessary at this stage. The cases are clear that the creation of a special assessment and the levying, levying of the special assessment is presumed to be valid. And there's an enhanced burden of proof on the property owner to establish that they're not receiving the proportional benefits. So I understand what their letters are saying, but, but they're misplaced from a legal context. I think those were the, really the major issues. If I missed one, I'd be happy to try to address it. But I think the empirical evidence and the allocation of benefits based on the value of the property were the two major themes. And we followed applicable Michigan law. Certainly, if any of these cases end up in the Michigan tax tribunal, the petitioner will have, the landowners will have the opportunity to try to sustain their enhanced burden of proof to show the lack of disproportion, or the lack of proportionality between the benefit and the, for the property increase. But at this time, the township is not required legally to present that kind of evidence.
Thank you, Dirk. Any other comments or discussion with regard to this Special Assessment District that's before us today?
This, of course, not the first time we've heard this one. It's been discussed many times and has been noted before. And Kathy Weisenborn mentioned, there's, this has been before us a lot. It's been a ongoing project for many decades. This one has been worked on by so many people to bring it to this point. And the board has, at previous hearings on this matter, supported the project. And as was noted, there's 56% of the people that signed that petition. Doesn't mean that's the total amount that supported it, but that's a very healthy number of signatories on this petition.
I just wanted to ask a follow-up for Dirk. So under state law, for us to modify or reject this at this point in the process, do we have that discretion?
Yes.
It's pretty much.
Yes.
All the rules have been followed.
You have, you have in place a special assessment guideline, Special Assessment District guideline, or policy, I think you're saying, it's a policy is what it's called. And the idea behind it is, and the board approved it, you know, the, the board should generally follow that policy. But from a strictly legal standpoint, you can terminate the project anywhere up until you've approved the role. So at this point, from a legal standpoint, ignoring the policy, and I'm not saying you should ignore the policy because the board adopted policy, but legally, you could, you could vote against it.
Philip Rogers.
I guess I just wanted to, in addition to what Dirk was saying, and he can probably confirm this, in the 1980s, when I was a young homeowner and we had dirt roads and we went to paving, the system of benefit was different and we dealt directly with the county at the time. The township did not specifically handle this. And the benefit system said that I was on a corner. And so the more frontage you had, the more you paid. So inadvertently, I got the biggest one because I had the biggest corner in the neighborhood. And for example, my neighbor right down the street had a driveway on Inkster Road, which was not part of our neighborhood, and so they got a half. And that was the policy and there was no, it didn't matter how much your house was worth. And I got stuck with 1.3 times the base value and my neighbor down the street was quite happy to get half. And, and that was how it went. And no matter, in the 1980s or now, I feel for you. I know it's a lot of money, but I also know it's a huge process and project as I was part of that committee as a resident. And it's hard for the 56%, excuse me, that worked tirelessly to approve it for us to deny that. It, it puts us in a very difficult position. So we kind of have to go by what, what it states. But I, I do understand and I feel for the position of people that are in favor and people that are, are objecting or stressed by it.
Martin, I will add, somebody had asked the question, what about the other phases? Obviously, there's still three more phases to come. And, you know, the answer is that we can't guarantee that they're going to pass. We can hope that they're going to see these two new beautiful sections of road and they're gonna jump on board. But there is no guarantee. So, you know, as far as we're concerned, we're doing this one phase at a time. The only thing I can say is I have encouraged several people that I've talked to, take a drive down Kirkway. The road commission just finished Kirkway and it's absolutely beautiful. And there's no doubt that the difference between what was there before and what is there now is exponentially better than what they were dealing with. And it can just give you a little confidence of how truly beautiful these are gonna be when they finish in your subdivision.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just another comment. One of the constituents talked about there could be multiple contractors per section. The point of us having the competitive bidding process is so that we can drive the cost down as much as we can while still meeting that standard. So the county holds those contractors to that standard, to that book. So regardless of who is building that, they are responsible to meet those standards. And if they don't, there are hefty penalties and fines in there for us to mitigate or remediate that work. So while the same contractor may not do each section, it will still result in hopefully the lowest cost burden to you to have that competitive process. So I understand there is a worry if Ajax isn't the one to do the next three. It also sets us up so that the construction isn't driving on the newly constructed roads. The, we're not gonna put additional wear and tear on those roads that we've already improved. So while I understand it'd be nice to get it all done in one fell swoop, it, as we've brought up, that there's a chance that you think the road won't be completed by November 15th, and I hope we're all wrong, and it is completed by November 15th. If we put that much work on several contractors, there's a higher likelihood that that will not be able to be met. So we're setting everybody up for success based on that. And that's the reason these policies are in place.
And I think it's important to keep in mind that it's all being managed by RCOC. So they have their policies that need to be followed to make sure that there's continuity and consistency in all of that construction. Just one other thing I'll touch on for former Birmingham resident, welcome to, you know, Bloomfield Township. And part of the, being a township is that we don't own the roads. They're owned by the county and also your taxes are capped at 10 mils. Birmingham doesn't have that cap. So Birmingham taxes are a lot higher and part of that is because they are responsible for the roads. So, you know, just one thing to keep in mind.
Great, thank you. If there's no other questions or points to make at this, I guess I would entertain a motion to approve the attached resolution number three and confirming the special assessment role and authorize the RCOC to proceed with the project.
Based on the 56% approval by the residents, I think it's incumbent upon us to respect that. And I'll make that motion.
Support. Motion by trustee Burnett and support by trustee Faquio. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, now we're moving on to item number five on the agenda. It's also a, a public hearing. And this item is the Hearing of Assessment Concerning Phase One of Bloomfield Village's Road Paving Special Assessment District 427. This is also gonna be presented by Jennifer Worthman.
Okay, so we'll get started on this one. Again, this is Special Assessment District 427, also known as red slash pink. Little discrepancy as the changing of the guard has changed the colors apparently too. But again, this is Phase One. This is the red slash pink section. It is part of Judson Bradways Bloomfield Village subdivision. It is Judson Bradways Bloomfield Village Number Three. 3.26 miles of public roads, which include Dorstone Place, Tottenham Road, Yarmouth Road, Waddington Road, Pine Street, Tilbury Road, Tilbury Place, Westwood Drive, North Glenhurst Drive, and South Bradway Boulevard. Here's the map. You'll see the included parcels and the excluded parcels. Repeat slide. Again, we're looking at 3.26 miles of the public roads. Project consists of pulverizing the existing road and placing new asphalt pavement four inches thick over the aggregate base with a full-depth cold milling asphalt removal, total curb and gutter removal and replacement, total under-drain installation with sotted shoulders. Minor drainage improvements will be made to reasonably assure drainage of the pavement and all shoulders and disturbed areas will be covered with topsoil and sod. Maximum five-foot approach will be constructed to the existing driveways to provide a smooth transition from the newly paved roadway where necessary. RCOC received bids on this March 26th, 2024 as well. Again, the lowest bid was received from Ajax paving. Final project cost came in at $10,691,917.38, which is a final assessment of $48,161.79 per unit of benefit. And we're looking at 222 parcels in this phase that did come in at 1.1% below the estimate on the petition. Again, the project can be financed over 15 years. Interest is to be determined after bonds are sold and that interest will be at 1% above the bond rate. We are requesting to have public hearing number two, approve resolution number three, and authorize RCOC to proceed with the project.
Thank you, Jennifer. So at this point, I will open the public hearing for SAD 427. And anybody who has a comment with regard to this or questions, we, we take notes. An objection, now's your time. State your name. State your name and address for the record and we'll try to address any questions you have.
Hi, my name's Brian Garmo. I reside at 130 Waddington. And I'm, and I protest this SAD and I'm objection to it. And I have three main points. And my first point is, will the market value of my assessed property increase as a direct result of this improvement? And we know that this assessment is about $48,000. Will the market value of my home increase $48,000 solely as a result of this improvement? The answer is clearly no. I've talked to many local realtors and they've agreed with that answer. There's case law from the Michigan Court of Appeals that frankly, I believe supports my position. The Michigan Court of Appeals has held that in order to determine whether the market value of an assessed property has been increased as a result of an improvement, you look at the market value of the assessed property with the improvement and the market value of the assessed property without the improvement. And the second point I want to bring up, it's another court of appeals decision. They talk about the proportionality. And frankly, from my position, there is no reasonable proportionality between the amount of the assessment and the value of the benefit that I'm receiving from my particular house. So when I purchased my house in 2011, I paid $281,300. So this comes out to about seven, this assessment, 17% of what I paid for my house back then. The second point is, there's a 15-year repayment for this SAD. From the people that I've spoken to, the shelf life of these roads is 15 to 20 years. So essentially, when I'm done paying this SAD after 15 years, I'm going to, the roads are going to be in disrepair. And am I going to get hit with another SAD in 20 years from now, 15 years from now? The proposal that we saw here is for four inches of asphalt. I've had contractors come to my house to quote me to repair my driveway. They're quoting me at three to four inches. So these are going to be roads that we're going to have. We're having a lot of traffic, garbage trucks, sanitation trucks. There's a lot of construction going on in the village right now. And frankly, I think it's a matter of time before these get in disrepair. The third point is, if we're redoing the roads, why are we not repairing the sewers? I've lived in my house since 2011. In the summers of 2021 and 2023, the sewers backed up during heavy rains into my house. I've never had a problem before 2021 despite other heavy rains. I've contacted the township, I've contacted the county. The county blames the township, the township blames the county, and I'm stuck in the middle with no resolution. The first sewer backup happened in 2021 and was blamed as a 300-year rainfall. But I've not, I've now had two of these rainfalls that have caused backups in this two-year period. And if these roads are redone now, then the sewers will essentially never be repaired. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Simmons, 164 Waddington, Brian's next door neighbor. I object to this SAD. I think that the road commission has never tried to do it in the cost-effective way. They've done it the most expensive way and I object to it. I think, as Brian brought up, as to what value I'm going to get, I've got one of the narrowest lots in the village. One of my neighbors, who happens to be on the village Board of Trustees, has four times the frontage I have. He's definitely going to get a lot more benefit from this than I am. But I'm paying the exact same amount? That makes no sense to me. And from what I heard your attorney tell you, if I heard him right, you have some discretionary ability. So I'm looking with my narrow lot to get half the assessment, as people asked on the other one. And I think I heard that you have the discretion. It may not be in your procedure, it may not be a legal requirement, but what is the right thing to do? I would hope you would look at what's the right thing to do. Now, if this thing goes through, I've got another concern. I went to the road commission presentation here first of the year. And he was talking about how when they tear up our road, they're going to park the construction equipment in the road, we're not going to be able to get to our property. We won't be able to drive down our street for several days. The question was asked, how are emergency vehicles going to get through? And we got blown off. The answer was, oh, we'll make sure they get through. We can't have it both ways. If we can't get our car down the street, you can't get a fire engine, you can't get an EMT rig, you can't get a police car in there. And I'm glad to see that the police chief is here. I want to know what is going to be put in place to make sure emergency vehicles can get to us while the roads are torn up and the road commission's parking all their equipment in the streets overnight? Finally, the sewers. Waddington has a problem. People are putting in check valves to stop the sewage from coming in. The water department says, oh, it's climate, climate change, it's all the big rainstorms. I've been there 45 years. Before they put that retention basin under Lincoln, under the golf course, we had far more flooding in the streets, far more backup, but it didn't come in our basements. Now it's coming in the basement. Something has changed on the Waddington sewer, especially that first block. If you don't look at it while the roads are torn up, well, shame on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Hi, my name is Julia Gragg. I live at 300 North Glenhurst, pink section. I object to this process. First, the arbitrary designation for ease of construction of what section would be in what section, what road would be in what section. It wasn't considered to what extent one block of residents is subsidizing the road construction of another. Glenhurst, we have no removal of trees. We have no fancy driveway treatment that needs to be paid for. I look at pink versus blue. These two projects are being done at the same time. The variable cost and by the same construction company I hear, the variable cost of materials, labor, financing, they're the same. The cost of these two projects should be shared equitably by the two sections' property units, not a 6K difference between what the pink section has to pay per unit and the blue section has to pay per unit. This, over and over again, as it was shoved down our throats, we were told it was to be equitable. This is not equity, okay? I understand the ones to follow might be at a higher interest rates or the cost of something might be less or more, but these are being done with the same bucket of expenses. I find that this law is ridiculous and I realize you guys have no, no control over that, but having been a property owner for four years of my adulthood in five different states, it's amazing that I am being required to subsidize homes of significantly greater value than mine. Homes in the pink section range in value from about 500K to well over 2 million. Their property taxes range from 6K per year to 46,000 per year. This project is going to have the impact of causing those of us who have lower property taxes, who are retired, who are on fixed incomes, to sell our homes. This is a forced sale by Bloomfield Township. I find that to be disgusting. I also realize that the township is going to benefit greatly as the properties are sold and our small, less expensive homes are torn down. And monsters will be put up, as one is being put up right now across the street from me. And the property tax bill on that will go up to that $30,000 per year rather than the 12, which mine is. I have a great concern about this beautiful road, and I've been told over and over again it will be a beautiful road. I live in Glenhurst, okay? On that little bit, people didn't even think I lived in the village. 30 years ago, I was told I had my address wrong. Anyway, people already travel down there towards Seehome over 40 miles per hour. How fast are they going to go now that I have this quote, beautiful, unencumbered road? The last thing is that the voting process for this was extremely not democratic. I cannot think of anything where there's a bond issue where we do not have a day of reckoning. This is when the vote is done. To extend the vote until the powers that be continue to browbeat or market or push for their objective is wrong. Can you imagine if we had a school bond or the senior center or the library bonds that we all went and voted and then it didn't pass? So they said, no, that doesn't count. We're going to extend it and have people continue to come in for the next two months to see if we can get more people to vote yes. Somehow, that just doesn't seem democratic to me. I also have two questions, three questions on this. Can the loan bonds be renegotiated if interest rates fall? Can the lien on my home be paid off at any time if I should sell? Which, you've already got that idea, it's probably going to happen. Can the person who buys my home then pay off the whole loan rather than having to hold on to it and pay all that ungodly interest? And the last thing is, the road commission, are they being paid by our SAD or are they being paid their amount that they are paid just by our taxes, Oakland County taxes? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Caitlin Hatman. I live at 419 Westwood Drive. I am very new to the neighborhood. I just bought my home. I have a very tiny little baby that also shares my home with me. And this was very surprising upon purchasing my home and moving to the village, of which I was very excited to do. I also have a very, very teeny, teeny lot, if you look at that map of all the beautiful homes in the village. Mine is one of the tiniest, tiniest lots. And I echo a lot of the other constituents here who have tiny lots and are not going to get the same proportional benefits that a lot of the much, much larger lots with the much higher value homes sitting on them for this $48,000 that is going to now be incurred upon us. Also, with the loan, with the bond that we can take out for over 15 years, of which I will pay close to then $75,000 for this work. And to somebody else who then said, the lifespan then of these roads, if they were petitioning in the 80s for this and then it's continued on, we're going to be doing this in a cyclical fashion. And am I going to have to take out the bond? Most likely. I just bought my home, just moved in, just paid a down payment, just had a baby. And then $75,000 over the course of this is an incredible amount of money for a lot size that's very tiny in comparison to others in the village. So I just wanted to state my objection and say that I share in a lot of the other concerns of those who have come up here and eloquently, more eloquently, shared their concerns as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm John Bobrowski. I reside at 210 North Glenhurst Drive. And I echo many of the comments that other commentators have raised and other objections. But I'd like to add a few points to the discussion that haven't already been raised. First is, I reside on Glenhurst Drive, which is the one block of Glenhurst Street that is not situated in the city of Birmingham. Now, if you go north of that block, the Pine Street, there is an unimproved block that largely looks like the surface of the moon. Now, it is hard for me to understand what value that Glenhurst residents receive based upon the improvement of the block when we cannot proceed to Pine without an SUV with off-road capability. It just doesn't make sense to me. The second issue that doesn't make sense to me is that we talk about the value of proceeding this way with the ability of the special assessment to be bound to the land so that the current owner doesn't have to pay the special assessment. But the practical result of this for people on Glenhurst Drive, which have smaller lots and smaller houses that are in the process of being raised and replaced with 7,000 and 8,000 square foot houses, is that you are not dealing with someone who wants to buy your house to reside there. You are dealing with somebody who wants to buy your house to raise it or a developer who wants to buy your house to raise it. So then when you look at the value of the roads and you say, well, the roads have to be proportion, provide some sort of proportionate value to the lot. Maybe you don't have to decide that now and prove that now, and maybe there's an enhanced burden and the law is what it is. You know, we'll deal with that. But the practicality is that when these developers and people that are going to raise these houses come in to buy, they buy at a significant discount. They are buying the value of the land only. They are not paying you anything for the structure. Indeed, they would prefer if the structure were raised before they buy it. So typically, as I've explored the sale of my house over the last four or five years, that a builder or someone who wants to raise the house comes in, they want a 20% discount to fair market value at a minimum. So when we're talking about proportionality and the value of these improved roads to the existing smaller properties, my house was built in 1937. I've owned it since 2000. It is hard for me to understand how burdening these residents, particularly on a street that, other than for this one block that's in the village, lies entirely in Birmingham, is going to provide any significant value to those residents. I don't know whether the drainage issue has been raised for my fellow neighbors over on Waddington. But, you know, really, when you look at the value of the roads, it, I'm sorry, I'm out of time. I'll have to stand on my exemption.
Just wrap it up, please. You've got a concluding sentence or something. We're happy, but.
Yeah. The roads won't have the lifetime that's expected due to the ongoing endemic construction. Bringing large vehicles in to knock down houses will tear up these roads and the useful life promised is just an illusion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Reibenberg. I live at 920 Yarmouth Road with my husband, Rob, and our two daughters. We're in the red section. I'm here to voice my objection with the roads project. First, the exorbitant cost. And secondly, the way the project has been conducted. First and the most obvious is the unreasonable cost. As we all know, the interest rates are at an all-time high, higher than they were when many signed this petition. And the response from the village when discussing the timing of the roads during a period of such high interest rates was, well, you can pay for it all upfront and avoid the interest. And this is true, but inconsiderate and insulting. Just because we live in the same neighborhood doesn't mean we all have the same financial means. I am especially concerned about my elderly neighbors that are on fixed incomes. Where are they to come up with $48,000? I have a daughter heading off to college and a bill for $48,000 for the roads was not in my budget this year. My second issue is with the petition process. I sent the, an email to the village manager on December 11 of 2022, shortly after the project was announced, inquiring about the timelines and expiration dates for the petition. Her response to me was that their goal was to have the petition completed by March 31 of 2023. She also told me, and I quote, "The petition itself says it has to be returned by June 15, 2023, but the date is not set in stone and the township may accept the petition after that date if it takes that long to get the requisite number of signatures." June 15 came and went, and finally, at the end of July, we were notified that the number of signatures for the pink section was finally obtained, or red section, was finally obtained by the village, three and a half months after the original. finally obtained by the village, three and a half months after the original target of March 31st. These petitions need to have expiration dates. It seems extremely one-sided to keep a petition open until you get the answer that you want. So I ask that in the future, the township can seriously consider the impact of the exorbitant costs, the unreasonable financial burdens it puts on our residents, as well as the process of indefinite, open-ended petitions, both unfair and unjust. Thank you.
My name is Michael Doonan. I live at 166 North Glenhurst for 47 years. I've experienced the road situation for years. I sat on the village board. I've gone through all the rest of it. Personally speaking, I think the last vote on this approval is a lot of smoke and mirrors. It was not upfront. There was nothing going on. It, just like the lady just mentioned, it kept on being pushed. We're extending it. We're going to get more votes. We're going to do this and that. The bottom line is, is it was not a success to begin with. If it was at the deadline, it would have ended, and it probably would have gone down in defeat. My other question is, is assuming that it does go forward, which I hope it doesn't, the thing is, is how are we going to be getting in and out of our residents? You go to the grocery store, I'm not going to be carrying groceries from Maple up my street. Neither is my wife. Neither is a dry cleaner that comes and picks things up and takes it away and brings it back. Neither is a lawn service, the fertilizing services. All these things have to be taken into consideration. The other thing is, is the approach from the street to the sidewalk, the driveway, apron, whatever. I understand, and I need an answer, is it going to be replaced? We keep on hearing, well, you know, it will be impacted. Well, that doesn't give me an answer to, is it going to be replaced? That's, I'm not for it. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Susan Winters. I'm here to protest this project. I live at 1085 Waddington. I own that property there and have for 20 years. I'm here to object because I believe it's too expensive, and I don't think it's going to reach the objective that everybody that's involved in this project thinks it's going to. My home is on the corner of Yarmouth in Waddington. There's an extreme number of trucks and all sorts of businesses that go across Yarmouth on a daily basis that are going in and out of Birmingham and other streets that are tearing down houses and building up new houses that are destroying the street on a regular basis. I think somebody said something about with the next phases, that they wouldn't be able to drive on the streets. I would hope that somehow that could stop on these new roads, because the destruction of these new roads is going to start the minute that they're put in. I saw it happen on Cranbrook Road when they tore that up. I'm concerned about the water and sewage issues that, I mean, how many years are we going to have these new roads? And then they're going to be torn up because they have to put in new sewage and new water issues. That's a huge concern for me, because this is a huge problem for us, that we're not going to be able to park our cars, or we're not going to have access to our lots. I'm also very concerned about the trees. I've lived in Bloomfield, Birmingham, for my entire life, and the roads are not the reason why the people live there. They live there because of these beautiful trees and the beautiful old homes. And I don't know which trees are coming down. 350 trees? Can you imagine the village without 350 trees? It's going to, the aesthetic of the village is going to change. And once you get the new roads, then people are going to look at the houses, and they're going to want the houses to come down. And then we're not going to have the village anymore. That's what's special about the village, is the beautiful homes with the beautiful trees, and nobody's looking at the roads. We should repair the roads the best that we can, but not to this extent. This is way too expensive. It puts my house at a disadvantage should I go to sell it for a house that's similar to mine in the village that's not part of this assessment. Somebody will pick that house over mine because they don't want to pay that price. I think it's unfair, and I think you should please object. Please not follow through with this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments on the public hearing for SAD 427?
I'll come again and speak in support of the SAD. I guess I'd like to address just a couple of things on the trees. We did have a tree inventory done of our street trees, two years ago, I believe, and there are about 2,000 trees in the village, street trees. That doesn't count the ones that are in the yards. Right now, we have estimates for 50 trees in the red section and 42 trees in the blue section. That's 40% of the approximate road coverage. So 350 trees seems like an awful lot, but in comparison to almost 2,000 trees, it's not a huge proportion. We would love to save every tree we can, and we appreciate the road commission adjusting their normal methodology to be able to do that. Mr. Fletcher earlier spoke and referenced the tree committee. We do have a tree committee that's working on grant funding to be able to replant trees once road construction is done. So we are working on that. We do think that there are grants out there that will be available to help us reforest the village along the streets once the construction is done. Now, granted, we can't plant 30, 40-year-old trees, but we can plant trees that will be beautiful in, starting now, and will continue to grow and be more beautiful. I hope that you will support this. It's been a long road to get to this point. It is expensive, but it is not, you know, our roads do need to get fixed, and it's never going to get any cheaper. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know I spoke before, but the village manager just spoke twice, so I figure I can too.
Well, you can speak on each, each public hearing separately, or well, you know, so welcome back.
One thing, you know, Mike Doonan said about getting to our house, getting groceries in, getting to where we can drive our vehicles, wherever we have to park them. There's a lot of seniors in the village, a lot of seniors that can't be walking, can't be caring, that have heart conditions, have back problems, you name it. I think you've got an ADA issue here if we can't get to our houses and get in and out of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have a question. About Mr. Becker like?
There's only one comment per person, per item. So you have already commented, we cannot have another comment. Your time was already used. I'm sorry to say that there's not, you can't come up a second time for this comment. But we're, you're welcome to contact any of us anytime after the meeting, and we can try to talk to you. Just any other comments for those folks who have not yet spoken with regard to this public hearing on SAD 427? No? Okay, I will close the public hearing then on SAD 427, and let's bring it back to discuss some of these, these good questions. And Mr. Messler, you might as well join us again too, please.
So I'll kind of.
Oakland County Road Commission.
Yep, we'll have Mark join, and I'll kind of work my way down a few of my notes, and Mark will be able to jump in. I just wanted to touch base. I know the water sewer issue came up several times, and I will say, at the initiation of any sort of special assessment, our engineering department is involved, as well as our DPW, and they do go through any of the stuff that is on their to-do list, any known issues. They roll through everything to make sure that at least that area is not on an up-and-coming project that they are aware of. So they do, they are proactive in that process. The mention of Waddington having issues, I can definitely bring that up to our DPW so that they can look into it. But we do evaluate the areas before we kick off any sort of SADs. Loans are assumable. I know that's come up a couple of times, and there's some contention as far as what that really means, but they are assumable if the house is sold. Dani normally brings it up, and she's not here today, I know, and I'm not very well-versed on it, but we have a new treatment for roads. It is a topical sort of treatment that is supposed to help expand the life term of a road. And I know Dani is pretty dedicated to making sure that people who invest in their own roads and the people who are paying for these SADs, those roads do get priority with this treatment as well. So if anybody kind of wanted some details on that, I would be more than happy to get a little bit more. Mark, if you want to talk on the aprons, I had that on there.
Yep. I also want to add note on the current infrastructure out there. So both Bloomfield Township and Water Resources, Oakland County Water Resources Department has done rehabilitation process of the existing infrastructure out there. So the storm sewers, the sanitaries, the water mains, there's been extensive rehabilitation of those public utilities throughout the entire Bloomfield Village project. So we reached out to those entities before the design process. It's been made very clear that there is no concerns and that there's been a complete evaluation of those public utilities by both entities, Bloomfield Township and Water Resources. There was quite a bit of concern about access. So as previously stated in meetings prior to this, we will maintain access to the residents. With that being said, you are going to experience delays. We've got big yellow toys that are playing in a small sandbox. We keep all of our equipment within the road. We're not up into your yards, et cetera, et cetera, but we will maintain access. And I think your public safety officials can verify that when we did Kirkway, at any time that there was an emergency or the need of emergency vehicle within that site, they were granted access at all costs at any time that they needed access. So rest assured, if we're paving and there's, the fire truck needs to get in, the ambulance needs to get in, the police need to get in, at that point, your safety as the residents is a higher concern of us than our paving operations or any construction operations that we have. So they will be granted access at all costs.
Mark, can you just state again that people can, will have access to their homes, even if it's a delay, but everybody's going to have access?
Everybody's going to have access to their houses. With that being said, I do want to clarify, we have gone to a full paving operation, a full-width paving operation. So as we did in Kirkway, there will be time that you will not be able to access. We will communicate that multiple times prior to that taking place, okay? The reason that we've gone to a full paving operation is for quality purposes. So if you go out near existing road right now, you will see that down the middle of the road, there is what we call a joint. You will see that that joint is separating and it's ravelling or failing, okay? When we do a full paving operation, there is no centerline joint to fail. So it becomes a quality construction practice for us. But again, that will be communicated. So everybody's going to have ample notice to either maybe take a vacation, go get your groceries ahead of time, et cetera, et cetera. During the course of construction, as I said, you're going to be inconvenienced. There will be a lot of communication by staff in the field letting you know, it's going to be a five-minute delay, or, you know, it may be. The great thing about this project is there's lots of entrances and exits so that people are able to use different roads to get to their, to their residents. The quality of materials. So I heard somebody mention about, oh, we're only putting four inches of asphalt, all right? The quality of the materials that we have specified in our proposal book are no different than the quality of materials that would be used on I-75, would be used on Telegraph Road, would be used on any of the primary roads. All the HMA or the asphalt, the concrete, the aggregates, they're all of that same quality that are used on those higher-travelled roads. So there is no concern for us as a, from a design perspective, or a life expectancy with four inches asphalt. Also important for you to realize that your roads currently are 60 years old. All right? So when we design for construction, we are actually using materials that are of higher quality than they were 60 years ago when your roads were put in. So that kind of sets a mind frame of what kind of life expectancy that you can expect out of these roads. Driveways. So the driveways will be addressed. We are putting in the curb and gutter, which will, actually, you'll be able to see it. Driveways, we're going to be back into your driveways somewhere between three and five feet. There may be instances where we're back into the driveways further, depending on what kind of transition needs to be made, whether your driveway is an asphalt driveway or a concrete driveway. For quality construction practices on concrete driveways, we go back to the first joint. So we're not going to come in and make an additional joint in your driveway. We'll extend that back to the existing joint, and we will tie those products together. If you have asphalt driveway, you will get an asphalt driveway back. If you have a concrete driveway, you will get a concrete driveway back. I think that pretty much answers all the questions that were raised earlier.
Thank you, Mark. The only other thing I was just going to touch base on was the question about the petition deadlines.
Yes.
So typically, we give the petitions a six-month suggested turn-in date. In this specific case, I came into the mid-red project, is taking over SADs. Previously, our engineering department was handling it, and it came to me halfway through circulation. Again, it's a suggested timeline. It's hard when these are being circulated, especially, you know, in Michigan, we have snowbirds, we have people that are out of town. There were people that were communicating that they had interest and wanted to get home and wanted to sign, and it's an in-person process. You can't mail me your signature. I have to have you sign a petition. So when we have people that are communicating that they wanted to sign, it was kind of a discretionary thing to allow that extra couple of weeks for those people to sign. The march was not a deadline set by us, and in fact, like I said, we don't set an actual deadline. We have a suggestion of a six-month circulation, and this one was extended by a few weeks because we had residents communicating that they wanted to be able to sign. So that's kind of where that stood.
What was the ultimate percentage? Who signed? Do you have that with?
Uh, I don't know that I have that one on me. Kathy? 52 for this.
Thank you. And Chris, you had a question, I think?
Yeah, specifically, one of the residents specifically brought up the high cost of this project, meaning $48,000 per unit of benefit. One of the reasons specifically that this project is higher than some of our other SADs is the length of the amount of road material that is being worked on, as well as complete replacement of curb and gutter. Is that correct versus just some of the overlays or some of the other projects we've done in the township?
Correct.
So again, when we do this project, we have to take the concrete and remove it in one fashion, the asphalt in one fashion, the cobblestone or actual brick in another. They can't just go to the same landfill. So there is a redundant work that has to be done specifically to the village that does not occur in every other SAD project within the township.
There's actually a huge additional process that has to take place. So since the curb has been covered by asphalt, we actually had to put in a special provision for the contractor to remove the asphalt from over the top of the curb prior to being able to remove the curb, because the asphalt in the curb cannot go to the same distribution as far as getting rid of, getting rid of the material. So there's actually an additional process where they're going to have to bring a mill in, and mill the asphalt that's over the curb off, which normally we don't have to do.
So again, those are some additional burdens and constraints for this project or the village project over some of our other SADs that had seen a lower unit of benefit.
Correct.
As well as an increase in the amount of fill, because the roads are so deep that we've then had to, they have to refill that large depth to get back to your yard heights.
Yeah, so basically what there is, there's, I believe it's eight to 10 inches, don't quote me on this, but it's in our cross-sections, but it's eight to 10 inches of existing material that's there. We're putting back four inches of material. So we have to haul in 21AA aggregate, create a new subbase to be able to fill that void.
And again, that's going to hopefully continue that higher quality and longevity of the road, because we're building basically a new roadbed, not just adding four inches of asphalt.
Absolutely. And we're also introducing the underdrain, which currently isn't there. And we're also introducing the under-drain, which currently isn't there. So when the subgrades do, when the water penetrates through asphalt, which a lot of people don't realize that water does actually penetrate through asphalt, when it gets to the subgrades, the subgrade is also graded so that the water will disperse to the edge drain that's underneath the curb and it'll keep the subgrades dry and stable versus them being saturated. So theoretically, that road should not experience the frost-free cycles that it experiences right now because of the additional edge drain.
And again, that's all in our specs, so regardless of if it's Ajax or any of these other, they have to meet that expectation and if they do not, we will either fine them or backcharge them for the work having to be repaired.
Yes. In the cross-sections, the cross-sections for red are no different than blue. In the proposed future phases, we'll have the exact same cross-sections in construction practice.
So I have one question. It was brought up that the one section is $48,000 per unit and the other was $42,000. It seems like same contractor, same time, same neighborhood. Is, was it a depth issue? Is that what you were touching on, that that's why it caused the extra $6,000 per household in that quote?
There's additional work that needs to be taken place in the red section. So there's more per se, public utility structures, drainage structures, things of that nature that are taking place within the red section that not is necessarily taking place within the blue. Those processes are still in the blue section. And I'll kind of maybe let Jen speak to how the assessment plays out with, you know, the number of residents and et cetera, et cetera. That's probably best answered by those doing the assessment, but.
And another thing, in my personal experience, having had our roads done in the eighties and we tried twice in the teens, 2015, 2017, something in there. Twice we tried to get our roads repaved because they were cracking. We did have the two where they did a half and you could drive on it immediately. It was pretty funny because I had someone coming over and I thought they wouldn't get to my house and they drove down the one half that was paved within minutes of being paved. But we did do the two halves. But in the teen years, twice we had residents try to pass this and we got to 48, 49%. Both times it failed. Over the years, the township did come through though at times where there were specifically bad areas and do the overlay, but it was to the point where they were saying, nope, no more. And then we were actually one of the first recipients. I was not on the board, I have no idea how we were chosen, maybe because we'd been trying so hard and failing, but we had what Jen was referring to, it was called Cape Seal. And it was something that was a coating that was put on our roads and they said, I think it was a five to eight-year extension, I don't, I'm not positive that was the number of years. And that was probably at least seven or eight years ago. And, you know, we all had our doubts, you sprayed this stuff on here. It really has stabilized our roads. So our roads were done in 88 and we are still, all we had, and the Cape Seal was done by the township at no cost. So we're still on those same roads and it sounds like the quality of the installation is always improving. So I, you know, I hope that is at least a little bit helpful. And being a township, we're not paying as high a taxes as a Birmingham. Basically, you're paying extra tax every month because they're going to take care of your streets and I know it doesn't help when you skip this bill.
Yes, Chris.
So a couple of other things that some residents brought up. I believe our environmental services department, we were delaying certain projects in Safety Pass. I remember it was brought up on the board, it actually happened when I was here. That concern was brought up, we were going to do some Safety Path and some improvements to ADA in the village and we were making sure that we were not doing it at the same time you're going to be doing any of these road SADs. Specifically, we don't want to have construction and trucks on these newly paved roads. So we're trying to make sure that they were done at a similar time. So we were trying to make sure that we did not add additional construction or burden to those roads. And another one, a resident said that this is forced on by Bloomfield Township. So the township, the board is deciding that you get this SAD. This was homegrown by the residents. So the residents in your area, whether you guys are happy with it or not, apparently 52% of your neighbors, friends, family, coworkers decided this and brought it to us. So we didn't ask for this. We're just the ones who enforce the fact that 52% of the residents are asking for it. So this isn't forced by us, we're just trying to help with the process to ensure that you can get the bonds financed over 15 years and you can get the buying power of the township for your bonding. That's what we're doing here. So I don't want to, I understand people may feel forced or feel they have to sell a home and that, that isn't, that's not what I want. I never want to be forced out of their home for taxes or the tax burden, but the same token, your residents are asking for this, that's why we're doing it.
Yeah, that's a really good point. It is a difficult decision to make for all of us. I know it is for me, I'm sure it is for everyone here too. This is also part of the process. I mean, this is why we're here, there's a hearing, you have an objection, this is not the last end of it. You can make, file an appeal if anybody wants to do that and pursue their, their arguments with the tax tribunal. And that's certainly within everyone, you know, the rights of those folks that have expressed an objection here or submitted one in writing prior to the hearings. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I just want to highlight, you know, to touch on what trustee Kolinsky said. I don't like the idea of having to cut down trees. I don't like the idea of, you know, residents having to pay $40,000, $50,000 for their roads, but as somebody who lives next to the village, somebody who grew up riding my bike in the village, I also can't accept roads that, you know, somebody whose family hails from a third world country, roads in third world countries are not that bad. And frankly, the reason why the cost is so high is because this work has been deferred for so long. 60 years is what our COC is telling us. So there's, you can't even see the curbs because of how much overlay had been put on top. The roads are so bad, overlay's not going to cut it anymore. So the option is either, don't fix the roads, they're going to get worse, the cost is going to get higher, or we have to pay and we're going to lose our trees, which we, you know, can replace. It's, you know, don't envy me for sitting in this seat, it's not an easy decision to make, but frankly, I don't really see any other option. So, you know, it's unfortunate, but part of it is because it had been deferred for so long. If it had happened, you know, 10 years ago, when they wanted to do it or even 20 years before that, we wouldn't be sitting here today, we wouldn't be looking at the numbers that we are. So it needs to be addressed now, the problem's only going to get worse.
Thank you. There were a couple of questions related, I thought, to the loan. Can the loan be renegotiated? Lean paid off anytime? Can the buyer of the property pay off the loan in full at that time? Is there someone?
Yeah, I can speak to that, I was going to speak to it on the next agenda item, but I can do it right now, it's not a problem. The first question was about renegotiating the bonds. If rates go down, the answer is yes, we could do that and we have done that in the past successfully. Second question is the lien at payoff for transfer of the property. The lien is only each individual assessment, so if you choose to defer it over 15 years, each year's payment is the lien. So once that gets paid, there's no lien. So that's how it can transfer to the next buyer or it can be paid off at any time with no penalty, just whatever the accrued interest is at that point. At any time, what else? We will give homeowners until June 13th, so six weeks roughly, to pay the full amount without any interest. After June 13th, I'm going to go into the market and sell bonds. The bonds will be 15 years and the rate of interest we charge is 1% above whatever we get on our bond rate. I would say that we're one of the few municipalities with a AAA credit rating, so we have really low borrowing costs. Just by way of reference, our interest rate on the one last year that we did was 4.7%. Remember that we are a municipality, so our bonds are not taxable at the federal level and so we can get lower costs as a result of that. So 4.7% was last year, I would expect that it's going to come in something similar to that, maybe a tad bit higher, but pretty close to that. I said you could prepay it at any time, just with accrued interest, there's no penalty to prepay. And residents will have until June 13th to make the full payment without any interest.
Great, thank you.
And is transferable with the property?
Yes, so the lien is transferable at any point during the 15 years.
It could be paid off at any point in 15 years?
Yeah, it could be paid off at any time, you know.
With accrued interest, I'm being coached to say.
Yeah, so if you wait past June 13th, you have to pay the accrued interest at that point. We sell the bonds, we're probably going to sell the bonds the last week of June, so I'll know at that point what the interest rate's going to be. And then the first payment would be December 1st because it goes on the winter tax bill and it'll be with the accrued interest for that six months. And then each year after that will be one year's worth of interest plus the payment. So for example, for this district, the annual assessment is 3211 and then the interest starts high and it gets lower as you pay off more of the principal.
Great, thank you.
Chief Gallagher was just going to speak real quick to the public safety aspect.
Yeah, Chief Gallagher from the Bloomfield Township Police Department. Just to settle some of the public safety concerns, we work very closely with Oakland County Road Commission. Anytime that they typically are doing projects or even MDOT for that matter, but like Square Lake Road right now, the business loop is being done, we get periodic emails or weekly emails as those projects progress. So I've actually been on scenes where Oakland County Road Commission's been doing projects where they have actually escorted us through areas so that the emergency vehicles can get to the locations we need to go. You know, whether it's spending a snowplow time where they see that we're struggling to get somewhere, they'll drop a plow and kind of help us through. And I, so I have no doubt that in this situation, if there's a life and death emergency, that new road's going to not take priority to us getting to a residence in those neighborhoods. So again, we have that, you're very fortunate in the village, you have the village officers down there. They know many of the residents who are in need and I can guarantee if there's a problem, they will be more than willing down there to make that extra, take that extra step. So just wanted to make sure that we know that public safety is a priority.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I do just want to add one other thing and to thank Representative Price again. To everybody here who's unhappy about this, really who we need to be complaining to are our state representatives. The way that the state of Michigan, sorry, but I mean, that's. I ran for state representative in part because road funding is such a huge problem in the state of Michigan and the way that our legislators have decided to fund our roads is backwards, which is why you end up having to foot the bill. And myself too, I live on a private road. My neighbors and I are looking, you know, we're responsible for plowing, we're going to have to repave, actually, we're not even looking at repaving now because it's getting so bad, we're getting to the village point as well. So I feel your frustration, I understand your frustration, I don't want you to think that your concerns are going ignored, but this is a problem that has to be addressed. And we have five, in Bloomfield Township now, we have five state representatives. I encourage you to contact all of them, the more state representatives that are on this issue, the more likely it is that it can finally move forward because this has been a problem in the state for decades and decades and it's not going to go away unless our state legislators are ready to bite the bullet and do the hard work.
Great, good point.
Thank you.
Okay, well, everybody want to make a motion to approve the resolution number three, confirming the special assessment. SAD 427 authorized the RCOC to proceed with the project?
So moved.
Support.
A motion by Mr. Burnett, support by Ms. Vekie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I appreciate your comments, I hope your answers, questions have been answered. If not, you know where to contact us, we'll be happy to respond to questions you may I'm just going to wait a minute here while folks clear out and then we'll start the next Okay, so item number six is to consider approval of resolution declaring the official intent to reimburse project expenditures with bond proceeds. And this is Treasurer Shostak.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so as I kind of foreshadowed earlier, we are going to be selling bonds to finance these projects. Because they're done at the same time and they're both road projects, we can bundle them and sell it as one bond offering, which does have some benefits. They go out for a $19 million offering as opposed to an $8 million offering, we're going to get more bidders and therefore a lower interest rate. However, as you might have heard from Mark, that the construction is scheduled to start May 6th, which is literally less than two weeks from now. So in order to keep that date and allow the contractors to hit the deadline in November, we are going to front money from the township out of our operating reserves to start the construction. And so next week, I'm going to be sending $4 million over to the road commission to get started and get the project moving. It's going to take us some time to get the bonds offered and the proceeds in. And so there's two parts to that. One is, we want to allow some period of time for the residents to prepay, should they want to, and that would be for the total cost of the assessment, 48,162. And if they pay it by June 13th, there's no interest or any additional costs related. After June 13th, they can, again, still prepay it at any time, or at any point, it's not prepay, they can pay it off at any time, but after June 13th, there's going to be an accrued interest portion that's attached to it. So once I know on June 13th how many people have paid or prepaid and how much we have left to finance, I go into the market with our bond council and sell the bonds. And then it takes about four weeks to close and receive the proceeds. As I mentioned before, we're one of the few municipalities with a AAA credit rating and so we're able to put that to work in getting a very cost-effective interest rate. Just by way of example, last year on the Kirkway project, the rate on the bonds was 3.7% and then the 1% that we charge to administer the district made it 4.7%. So that's significantly less than even we're earning on our cash and that's because we are a municipality, it's tax-free municipal bonds and so the rates are lower as a result of that. So there's no penalty to prepay at any time, you just have to pay whatever accrued interest is there from the previous December. These annual assessments will be on your winter tax bill, so that'll be due and payable December 1st through February 14th. Got that. So the last thing that we need to do is because we're using township funds to get the project going, we need an official authorization to say that part of the bond proceeds will be to pay us back for the money that we're putting up on the project. So that's what this resolution is. It was prepared by our bond council, it's Dickinson Wright, and it basically just says that we're going to be issuing bonds to pay for this project, but we're going to be fronting some money and we need to get paid back for that money.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Support.
I thank you for your support. So much support.
Trustee Murray, support by trustee Kolinsky, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next item, item number seven, consider approval of senior services wellness month proclamation. Christine.
Hello.
Hi.
So May is older Americans' month and the theme is Powered by Connection. This theme recognizes the profound impact that meaningful relationships and social connections have on our health and well-being. Connectedness also plays a vital role in the supporting, in supporting independence and aging in place, which is a universal goal. Additionally, May 29th is National Senior Health and Fitness Day with the theme of Make Fitness Your Friend for Life. So our team values the goals of these national observances and how much they relate to our own mission. So we combine them all for Senior Wellness Month. We are, oh, I have a presentation. Sorry. And it's really pretty and I'd rather you look at it than me. Pardon me, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. Much. It's good to have support.
It is very nice looking.
Thank you.
But you would be fine, you're very good too.
I can't, I can't take all the credit, Amy McKay worked on some of these slides for us.
Go Cable.
Okay. Okay, so, oh, we are offering people the opportunity to pursue both fitness and connection in May, but we have also broadened programs to enhance overall wellness. We hope to inspire action for improved safety, health, knowledge and independence as well as success on the longevity journey that we're all on. Let's see, so people are invited for joyful movement to music, if that sounds more appealing than the word exercise. May 1st through the 6th, we're offering complimentary classes for residents 50-plus. 19 group classes are in the pool or the. Nineteen group classes are in the pool or the studio. Advanced registration is required, and transportation is available if needed. This slide shows there's a wonderful variety, bar balance, circuit training, small group personal training, yoga, aquatics, seated classes. We like to tell people there's no, there are no special clothes needed, just comfortable ones, no special experience needed, just a willingness to try, no sweat or pounding heart rate unless you choose it, and our welcoming instructors will help people feel comfortable with their own level of activity. So our goal is to turn a have-to into a want-to. People can also get personal fitness assessments, one-on-one, personalized with our professional fitness staff, and these can be used to set goals, track progress, and select appropriate classes. So leaning into the broader wellness concept, people can taste healthy cooking recipes, soothe their soul with music, meditation, or gentle stretching. We also have specialists coming to present. They'll be sharing helpful information regarding fall prevention and how hearing impacts memory. Balance assessments and hearing screenings will also be available. And isn't enjoyment part of wellness? We will be hosting a beautiful Tai Chi performance by our instructors and students and an engaging musical performance. There'll be lots of sing-along songs from the sixties and seventies. Sweet Caroline, anyone? Right? Everybody knows that song. Oh, that was that slide. All right, so older adults are significant contributors to the community. Your time tonight to recognize them and encourage wellness are valuable and appreciated. I hope that the proclamation that we're going to be discussing tonight inspires many residents to get more active and connected with us. We want to support their wellness journey. And of course, we have lots of ways to learn more, and I'm going to leave that up on the screen for your discussion.
Thank you. I'm stepping in his chair, and Martin, if you step out for a second. Would you like to read us the proclamation?
Oh, I would.
Slowly.
And I did not bring it. I was at my desk thinking, oh, I need to bring the proclamation, and then it's gone. Do we have it there? I'm happy to read it if you have a copy.
Well, we like the lighter topic.
Okay. The Charter Township of Bloomfield, Oakland County, Michigan, National Wellness Month Proclamation. Whereas May is designated as Older Americans Month and National Health and Fitness Month, Senior Health and Fitness Month. Whereas the Bloomfield Township Senior Services Department has planned complimentary classes, health screenings, special wellness events, and social programs. And whereas it is appropriate to honor our mature citizens for their many contributions to the vitality and strength of our community. And whereas the United States Surgeon General has determined that regular physical activity and social gatherings results in significant health benefits and improved quality of life for older adults. And whereas all older adults can participate in fitness, wellness, and educational activities that improve and maintain their health. Whereas the township urges all its citizens to support the efforts of Bloomfield Township Senior Services Department, which encourages older adults to enhance their lives through regular physical, educational, and social activities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees do hereby proclaim May twenty-twenty-four as National Wellness Month in Bloomfield Township. Be it known to all reading this proclamation that it was adopted by the Township Board of Trustees on April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, and included in the minutes as a permanent record.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I guess I would just like to thank Christine. I'm glad to see the triad classes come back because I did those many, well, pre-pandemic, and it got me interested in senior center, and I just signed up. I'm going to visit one of your Aqua classes next week.
Awesome.
So thank you for what you're doing, and I support the proclamation.
Support. So the motion is support.
But.
Motion is support. Motion is support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, I missed some of it.
Good to see you.
All right, good to see you, too.
Thank you for moving us along while I was gone.
Problem, I vacated the chair.
He just took it from you.
You know, like the Republican, I just vacated the chair.
It's Michael's right, right? Yeah, better this one than the other.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, items eight, right?
Yep.
Gallagher. Consider approval of Franklin Fire Dispatch Service Agreement.
You care which one I'm at? I like this one, I can see you. All right. In front of you, we have a new agreement with Franklin Dispatch to take over their, provide the services dispatch for their fire department. We currently provide dispatch services for their police department and have so probably for the last year, year and a half or so. And one of the services that I believe is chief that lacks when we do that is the fire service dispatching for them. Every nine-one-one call that comes into our dispatch center for the village of Franklin or Bingham Farms, we take. We then have, if it's a fire emergency or medical emergency, we then have to transfer that call to the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, who then dispatches their fire department, and then we then receive a call for police services for the Franklin to be dispatched. So there's really a delay in service to their residents, and much like when we went to our EMD and transport from ourselves and took over our own emergency medical dispatching, we're really limiting that number of times somebody's going to be transferred and have to give the same information when they're dialing nine-one-one. Oakland County raised the rates for all of the fire dispatch services that they provide, and therefore Franklin reached out to us to provide this service. So we were supposed to be at the last meeting, but such a busy meeting, we bumped to tonight. So if this is approved. It's short, it's much shorter, I know, and I appreciate that. We were like number twenty-nine on that list, I think. But if this is approved, this will actually go into effect tomorrow, Franklin, due to the timeline that Franklin has to leave the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, who, again, has provided great service for them. It's just a level of service that is going to be better for their residents and does not affect the level of service we provide Bloomfield Township. And so with that, we will be charging them thirty-five dollars per fire run that is dispatched over the next year, and there's an increase per year of service after that. I believe it's a two percent increase. And we believe based on the, on the cost and the level of service we can provide, that that's a fair and accurate number for them at this time, not much more than they're paying now with the Sheriff's Department, but still a level of service for their residents. So in front of you is that, and I ask for approval for that. This has been reviewed by Dirk and the Village of Franklin and Bingham Farms Council as well, and they both approved.
Great, thank you. Questions or comment?
No, I'm glad to see we're doing this, just like we've had other cooperative agreements with other communities, whether it's through public safety or the building department. I think it's great for everybody because we can provide the services, and it's also safer for them because saving on the timeline, so.
Yes, it'll be a much better service.
Our dispatch team rocks, and people know it.
Last week was dispatcher week, so yes, we, our dispatch center is with the leadership of Meg, who you all think, you know, they do a phenomenal job in there, and they're well-known across the county for the work that they do.
Just one comment on this, obviously, coming from my background in public safety. Seconds matter, so when our dispatchers get that information, have to relay it, time counts, whether we're talking about cardiac arrest or a life threat issue, seconds count. So when our dispatchers can then dispatch the appropriate personnel in a fast and quick manner, it saves lives, and it provides just better service overall. So the fact that we're able to cut down for our neighboring community as well as providing them a fair and cost-effective approach is a win-win for everybody, so I'm obviously in favor of it. Unless there's anybody else, I would love to make the motion.
Support.
Motion by trustee Kolinsky, support by trustee Murray. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, looks like five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, now item number, what are we on? Item number nine? Thank you, everybody, for reminding me. Consider approval of Oakland County Tactical Consortium Agreement. Again, Chief Gallagher.
Hello again. In front of you have an update, this is only an updated agreement from the Oakland County Tactical Consortium Agreement, and I think you've heard me refer to OCTAC in the past. Just a real quick brief on the OCTAC agreement. This was created several years ago by Sheriff Bouchard after the Mumbai attacks, where it was determined that agencies across Oakland County should train together, should train the same terminology, and train the same concepts when we're responding to mass incidents or mass casualty incidents. The purpose behind that is, as we respond to these, we know one, no one community, I don't care how big or how small, can't handle these incidents on their own. The neighboring and the partnerships that we have across this county are very unique in this country, and that's something very important for our residents, not only in Bloomfield Township to know, but across this county. You know, OCTAC serves about one point three million people within Oakland County, and about every agency participates in it, and it's a nominal fee. It's a five hundred dollar fee for us to be part of this. What we've done with this agreement is, instead of just limiting to the training aspect of it, post-Oxford, we really recognize that the need to enhance and offer the additional services through it. So this agreement removes the word "training" from it. It adds a few board members throughout that agreement. It hasn't been updated in quite some time, so the Oakland County Council recreated, rewrote it for us. And it really, we're branching this out to more a training-response recovery model, meaning obviously the training, we're still going to do things identical, still going to train that way, as I've mentioned in the past, when we had our scare at the high school in two thousand and nineteen, we had about eleven different police agencies respond, probably about a hundred officers, and we had multiple entry teams into the building, and the terminology and the formations worked, and we had officers from Berkeley and Royal Oak partnered with Bloomfield Township, and they were able to operate seamlessly. We saw this unfortunate, luckily for us, we had no live incident, but when we responded to Oxford, again, we sent about fifteen individuals up to Oxford, many of them who were part of the secondary clearing of the school, and we were partnered with, you name the agencies that were there from here and Lapeer County, that it was, you know, there was casualty, there was stress, but the communications and the training worked on our end for a quick response. With the recovery, with the response model, that's where that falls in, again, is that when we respond to these, we're recognizing that, if we use Oxford as an example, the number of calls coming into the dispatch center, not only from the victims and the scared students in the school, but you had residents calling and complaining about police officers driving on there, you had police officers, unmarked vehicles responding out there with maybe only one or two lights, but trying to get out there, and they were actually calling nine-one-one to complain about driving. Well, you have dispatchers that were completely overwhelmed, dealing with actual victims on the phone while that, so in order to, you know, for us to be able to send a dispatch team to assist with taking those non-emergency, non-priority runs related to the incident is huge, to send investigators there of investigative teams. So that response model is really going to expand from just that patrol officer responders to the life-saving, to the outside area of that, and then your recovery model. We're realizing that very soon after these incidents, there's always a first, right? So you have your, typically a community wants to have a vigil. It's unfortunate that it's usually in the area where the same incident occurred, and so you're putting the same officers who just saw what they saw back to work very soon after, and vigils and first football games and birthdays and things of that nature that require a police response and a heavy police response. And again, we use Oxford as our example. We were fortunate to be allowed to go and assist at Oxford's vigil, but there was a scare that evening where there was a stampede because of what we thought were gunshots, and we had the same, some of the same officers who were in that building that night providing that security. So for us to be able to partner with our communities and say, you know what, Bloomfield Township is going to send you five or six police officers to assist with that security and that recovery piece. On top of that, just to add to it, is the peer support recovery. There's a big push in law enforcement in our career field with the new generation that, when I started, it was suck it up, and when you go back on the road, that is not the case now. We have peer support teams in place, and this part of this OCTAC agreement will also allow us to create a multiple-pronged approach with peer support teams available, that if somebody from Auburn Hills wants to talk to somebody in Bloomfield Township because they don't want to, they're afraid of the stigma within, our peer support members are there for them, and vice versa. There will also be a crew that would respond to, that selected, you know, hand-selected by the county that would respond to the critical instance and provide that critical stress management for the officers immediately and those incidents, and we're seeing the benefits of that throughout all of our agencies in Oakland County, and it's, it's just something that we feel is very important with that partnership. So in front of you is the new agreement. It's a little bit about OCTAC. In my opinion, it's one of the, probably one of the most valuable resources and partnerships that the sheriff's ever created here.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments?
No, thank you, Jimmy, for presenting it. Unless there's anything, I make a motion.
I just want to say one thing, actually, which was the peer support team, which, you know, put on a mental health first aid class last week, which I attended. Just, you know, really a fabulous experience, and the knowledge base that they have and the information they provided in this class was incredible, the fact that the support you provide them to do the important work they do within the department is wonderful, so thank you.
It's a trend in law enforcement that was missing, and, you know, we always say, how's the next generation going to do this job, right? Chris will understand when we say it, but there's a value in it, and, you know, unfortunately, within our own agency, over the last year, we've, we've used it. And one thing that's very important about a peer support team is there's state law that protects, that those peer support team members are trained, and there's state law that protects what they can share even with administration. They can only share with me if somebody's homicidal or suicidal. The rest of it is complete confidential by law, but that, I can't speak highly enough of one, our individuals here, and the amount of support that we've received from other agencies, particularly Oakland County's peer support team. Meg is actually helping create a dispatch peer support team countywide. It was a piece that we were missing for many, many years, that is closing the gap, and I think we'll see the trend across the country go that way, and I think you'll see incidents of a George Floyd incident, not, I'm going to say it'll never occur, I wish I could, but I think you'll see it drastically decrease when we treat, when we take care of ourselves before we go back to a community when we know we have hurt individuals.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we accept what's been presented, what you think is fantastic, and thank you for presenting it.
Thank you.
Support.
Motion by Mark Barnett, support by Kolinsky, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, item ten, consider resolution to approve the submission of a proposal to lecturers on August sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, and approve ballot language for a proposal to renew public safety millage. Treasurer Shostak.
All right, again here. So before you in the packet is a resolution with ballot language that we are, would ask for a renewal of one of our public safety millages. As you may recall, we have three public safety millages on the books that we collect. This is the smallest of the three, and in fact, really only comes out to about ten percent of the total tax revenue that we get in the public safety fund from these three millages, only about ten percent. So the other two are considerably larger. The last levy of this one is actually going to be December of twenty-five, so not this year, but next year, but we want to get ahead of it to make sure we get the people time to process it, and also make sure we have it on a regularly scheduled election, so as not to incur unnecessary costs, since in two thousand and twenty-five, I don't believe we have any elections, other than maybe if the school district does something, but township, we wouldn't have any, we wouldn't have any elections. So that's why we're doing it now in twenty-four, is at least that's what we're proposing. We're asking for a renewal of the rolled-back rate, which is zero point six four seven four mils, or about sixty-four cents for every one thousand dollars of taxable value, and the first levy of the renewal, assuming it passes, would be on the December taxes of two thousand and twenty-six. So as I said, the language in front of you is a resolution. The only thing I would add was to put zeros in front of the decimal points so that we make that more clear, so that we're not levying sixty-four hundred mils, so no one's confused by that. So I would just recommend if you so desire to support this, to put a zero in front of all those numbers, so it's clear that it's zero point six four.
Zero point six four, or dollar sign zero.
Dollar sign zero point six four, yes. That decimal point is very important.
What else is, what else is important?
He looks okay. Sure. Sure. I will say that I've drafted a number of these. I'd never put the zero before, before. I can't see any particular reason why you couldn't, so, I mean, we can add it. If everybody's more comfortable plating the zero, we can add the zero.
Michael, one other thing that's important, even though you already said it, because we've been through this before, this is a renewal.
Yep.
There is no increase whatsoever, because we've been through it, where we've said it's a renewal, and people just didn't get it, so.
Simply a renewal.
That's all it is.
Yes. Yeah, and on that, this is not an increase. Your taxes are not increasing off, over the headly rolled-back. The original amount was one mil. This is now 64.6474 mils. So it's already been rolled back over 35%. So when we think about this, we are being fiscally responsible. We are not asking for any more money than we already have been taking in, and that's what we're asking you to renew, which will still be rolled back based on headly, year after year. So again, we've been able to balance our budget and have a balanced budget, and we're able to operate within the money that was rolled back to us, and we're not asking to go back to the original one mil. We're asking to continue to just give us what was already allocated.
It's just a more efficient way of doing it, by scheduling it out this way.
Which is great, again, saving taxpayer money.
Yep.
So we don't have to allocate it. So unless anybody has any other questions or comments, I'd love to make a motion.
Support.
Motion by Kalinsky, support by Barnett, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, six to zero. Okay, Andrea Bibby, your turn. Item 11.
Good evening.
Introduction of lot split request for 5845 Loser Road.
Good evening. I'm Andrea Bibby from the Planning Division. I'm here this evening to just present, you could just have a seat if you want, and then I can, thank you. Great. I'm going to here this evening to present a request to set two public hearings. The first item on the agenda, it has to do with a lot split request for 5845 Loser Road. We actually have the homeowner here in the, in the, in the audience, Mr. Donald DeClerc has, is seeking a lot split through the township at his property at the 5845 Loser Road. The application has been reviewed, as well as documentation provided, to ensure that the proposal does meet all the requirements within our lot split ordinance. So without taking up too much of your time this evening, I can answer any questions, but I'm asking for the board to consider to set a public hearing for this lot split to occur the second township board meeting in May.
That's the meeting that's after Memorial Day.
Correct.
It's the Wednesday after.
Tuesday.
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 Tuesday. We're just going to, just for clarity's sake, say the second May meeting. As a new sort of approach.
Yeah, we've done that one, too.
Yeah.
Unless there's any, I have to make a motion, we set the date as the second, second meeting in May for a public hearing.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Barnett, support by Ms. Murray, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries, six to zero.
Thank you. The second item.
I wish I put this one up earlier on the agenda.
The second item is a consideration of an amendment of our zoning ordinance. This relates to ground monomechanicals and electrical equipment. Currently, we have provisions within our ordinance which allow for ground monomechanical equipment, which includes air conditioner units, generators, transformers, pool equipment, and any other related equipment. We have citing specifications within our ordinance. And then anytime we take a look at, we look at our zoning board of appeals processes, and anytime we see something that is frequently approved, and we feel that there is, is an advantage to the township to consider some amendments, this is a perfect example of that. As a matter of fact, so currently, our ordinance is written in a manner in which, in order for a ground monomechanical equipment to be immediately adjacent to the home, to comply with our ordinance, has to be within three feet of the home. Over time, between manufacturer specifications and different requirements, it has actually been, the three foot is actually oftentimes can be contradictory to what the manufacturer specs are. So the ordinance amendment, which, again, I'm asking to set a public hearing for, it has to do with allowing for this type of equipment to be up to five feet from the home for adequate intake and accessibility of servicing the unit. I mean, I think we had quite a bit of these to go before the zoning board last year, and they were all approved. So this is something that we see very frequently in our, in our department, and so that is going to be the, the request that we'll be making for the ordinance amendment. We did have an opportunity to share this amendment to the Planning Commission on March 18, offering they had support for the amendment. And we also did share this information to the Zoning Board of Appeals at their March 2012, 2024 meeting. They also supported the ordinance amendment. So with that, I'm asking for the board to consider setting public hearing meeting for the second meeting in May, to consider to hold a public hearing to address the ordinance amendment.
Questions, comments?
Happy to make the motion that we set a public hearing for this, the second meeting in May for the ground mechanical and electrical equipment proposed amendments.
Support. Thank you.
Motion by Barnett, support by Keith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, six to zero. Thank you very much. Oh, okay, so we got item 13. That's me. Consider townships' response to Department of Natural Resources findings that conditions exist for local watercraft control. We discussed this at the last meeting. I do have a little update, kind of where we're at, just to go through this again. The township board's goal has been that the township lakes, you know, for more than half a century, since the 1970s, when the no motorboat ordinance was put into place, have been safe, and they continue to have, and we want to continue to have a safe track record. We acted to propose, a proposal to the DNR to protect the safe, safety of these lakes and the quiet enjoyment of the lakes, and to preserve the no motorboat ordinance, and add additional regulations to prohibit high-speed electric motors and require a slow no-wake. The result, which has been noted to us during public comment, we discussed last meeting, the DNR only, did find that conditions existed for local watercraft control, which was great. However, what they only authorized was a, an ordinance for slow no-wake speed, which in essence was to eliminate the motorboat rule that had existed here since 1970. But as we had discussed, it had come to the attention of the board more recently, that that ordinance was adopted in 1970 without the proper administrative protocols, which rendered it invalid since its inception. So we're now talking about what to do next. As I understand, really from the sense of the board at the last meeting, you know, we don't, we're not ready to give up. This is something we want to continue to fight, and the question is, well, how best do we, you know, continue that effort? Treasurer Shostak mentioned one item, which is not on here, which is that there have already been contacts with, with local legislators concerning an effort to enhance local control, to amend the DNR watercraft control statute, to, to essentially flip the burden of proof, rather than we have to show it's necessary for safety, they have to show it's not necessary for safety. I think that gives the local, much more local control, which, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of that concept generally. So this would further that. I think that we might get some bipartisan support, both, both in the Senate and the House. Also, I do recommend that we, you know, adopt this DNR's slow no-wake ordinances, and that we also file an appeal to the DNR with regard to the certain larger lakes with more immediate concern. So, you know, Wing Lake, Gilbert Lake, Island Lake are all fairly large lakes with, you know, developed launch sites that could, you know, could be that someone may want to launch a motorboat on those lakes. It would be, you know, you know, something that would, I think, support and appeal. Lower Long Lake and Forest Lake are also large as well, but connected to Upper Long Lake, which is an all-sports lake, and therefore, those boats can travel through the canal, which they, which they do now on occasion, but when they do, they're required to have a, turn off their, their internal combustion engine motor and turn on their electric motor in order to go through the lake. So it really, most of those boats just don't bother to come, and we see very few of those, really. On those five lakes, I'd recommend we file an appeal. I do understand that, that, you know, the advice we've received from council, and this is not, I mean, it's, it's a, it's, it's, I don't like to use the word long shot, but, you know, the DNR director, which is a political appointee, has the power to review these and make a different decision. Will he? I really don't know, but I, I think that, you know, our set, I think that there is a legitimate opportunity to focus on five of the larger lakes and make a case for, to add a slow, add no internal combustion engine prohibition. For the smaller lakes, these are all, I mean, the largest of those smaller is 40 acres. Most of them are much smaller than that, with really, with, with no launcher, no, or more of just a natural launch opportunity. If we make a reasoned appeal with regard to the larger lakes, I do see a good, a good chance that it might be okay. But we would still pursue, as I'm recommending that we introduce tonight, the ordinances for slow no-wake, and authorize the clerk to file an appeal on behalf of the township board for the five lakes mentioned here. And, you know, we'll continue to, you know, to, to fight this, both by, if we have to, we want to, we want to, we'll have to try to change the statute, if that's what it takes. And the folks that represent us now are, have each expressed that I've communicated with, and Treasurer Shostak we've communicated with, you know, a general support with, for the idea. That's a general support. We haven't come up with language, or how it might go, or, you know, or support beyond our elected officials, but that's a start. So the, where are we going at now with regard, you know, let's say we pursue, we implement the ordinance for slow no-wake? The language itself was drafted by council. It has been reviewed by the DNR and approved if we were to proceed with the local watercraft control as proposed. If the DNR, if the ordinance are adopted, the clerk's office will provide the resolutions to the DNR, the sign language themselves, so we have to put up signs, we have to post a notice that these are slow no-wake ordinances in place. The language has been proposed to the DNR, they've, they've approved that language. The DPW has been engaged, and they're prepared to order the signs and install them by the end of May at all the launch sites, on the canal, bridges between Upper Long Lake and Lower Long Lake, and between Lower Long Lake and Forest Lake. We've been engaged in talking with HOA owners and legal with regard to whatever paperwork we need in order to gain access to this property and post signs. And we intend to send a notice of the ordinances to the local lake riparians and lake access owners, so there isn't any confusion about the slow no, no-wake requirement. So any questions or thoughts?
Yeah, I have a question. Remind me, does Upper Long Lake have public access?
No.
Okay.
None of these.
So if that's the case, then all five of the lakes that we're proposing to appeal have no public access?
That's right.
Strictly the people that live on it, and neighborhoods that have access to it?
Yes.
Right, okay. I think that's important.
Absolutely, it's important. And I think it's an argument that I would put in, in any appeal we make, which is whether the lake is public or private is one of the factors the statute says that the, the DNR must consider when deciding a local watercraft control. And I, you know, an argument that I think you're alluding to is that, you know, why else have that factor if we're not going to say, look, if it's a private lake, we're going to give much more weight to the local desires, versus if it's a public lake, well, local desires are only part of the question, because there are other people who can come onto these lakes.
Right.
In this case, it's almost, I mean, near unanimous support, I mean, really near. I think we only know of one person who said, well, why not? For maintaining the no motorboat regulation and expanding it to a slow no-wake. So, yeah.
Yeah, I know we spoke about this at length.
Yes.
And I was very uncomfortable after the meeting, and gave it a great deal of thought that this is something that was important enough, even though, and I totally respect Dirk and what you have to say about our chances with an appeal, but whatever the percentages are, I think this is important enough that we really need to be strong advocates for our residents in a situation like this. It's, it's part of the fabric of the community. It has been for a long time, not having the, having motorboats on these lakes, which doesn't make sense at all, especially, you know, the ones that have been specified. And I think it's something that, 100% behind and supportive, that we move forward with this. The worst that will happen is, well, we'll just have to start over again. But, but I, I think we, you know, we have a chance. I think what, there's a, there's an opportunity to put a case together that will be reviewed, and it's definitely worthwhile, and we need to do this for our residents.
So specifically on this, we had two residents come up today in public comments, specifically asking us, I'm sorry, three, Wing Lake and Gilbert Lake, two lakes, but specifically asking us to continue to petition for this, continue to push forward. So it's not like this is just the direction of the board. It is what our residents are continuing to ask, and the people that are affected by it. So I feel like it is our duty to continue to push forward based on that. So even if we have little to no chance based on council and based on the opinion that we all value, it is our duty to do what our residents ask. So I think it is what they're asking for, and we should do that.
It doesn't cost us any money, too. I mean, I, you know, we'll prepare the appeal ourselves, there's no legal fees, or we're not hiring a consultant, or.
But our residents are unanimously asking us to do this, so let's do it.
Yeah, I, I agree. Those hearings were very, very clear that we sat through, where there was only one person through 10 hearings that even said, well, I'm, I have a boat, or I might like to use my boat. It, it was, you know, it had to be 100 people or more that showed up between the couple of nights, and it's.
175.
Thank you. I knew it was a lot of people, but I wasn't counting. But it, it was, it was very interesting to hear all the different passions, and, you know, how dedicated people were to protecting the environment, too, because this is, you know, an environmental issue. So I'm really happy that we got at least, as far as we have, but I would like to see us pursue to make them non-combustion engine lakes as, as they, we have been treating them unenforcably. But this is what the residents want, and I think it's in the best interest of everyone to keep them safe, keep them clean. So I support it completely.
Great, okay. So how about we do a motion to authorize the township clerk to appeal on behalf of the board for the five lakes?
So moved.
Support.
So much support.
And vast support by other members of the board. Mr. Barnett, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Martin.
Carries, six to zero.
Yeah, thanks for working, working so hard on it, Martin.
Yeah, my pleasure. It's really important, too. I, and I, you know, there is not a 0% chance, but there's an 80% chance either, but we've got a good shot. I think we have a good argument to make, and, and we will have support from our local legislators, who will also be sending support for our appeal. So.
Letters from constituents.
And letters from constituents, so yes.
To the electeds.
We'll be in touch to talk about that a little bit, and look for my call tomorrow. The next thing, I believe, we have to, the introduction of ordinance to repeal the existing ordinances that are, with DNR advised so strongly are invalid, and to which our council has advised the same. And then 10 other introductions of ordinances for each lake to adopt a slow no-wake ordinance. And I think we can do one, can we do one motion or two? You can do one motion for items 14 through 24, one motion to introduce all of those ordinances and set it for public, not public hearing, set it for consideration and final adoption on the, is it May 13?
First May, first May meeting.
First meeting in May, there you go. Anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion. Just in here, township is lowercase, and the third paragraph, the third sentence,
third sentence, the responsibility of Boomfield Township to ensure all signage?
We, we have to...
Oh, it has to be like that?
The statute requires that we adopt, adopt it verbatim. So if the lake, lake is lowercase.
I see.
Township's lowercase, because that's the way their opinion came out.
Okay.
I, I saw the same thing, but I actually went back and checked, and in fact, they had it lowercase.
Township's lowercase, too.
Oh, wow, okay. Interesting. All right, good to know. Yeah, so I will make that motion. Support.
Motion by Key, support by Murray, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Which nicely takes us down all the way, item 25. And the winner is Adam Ruse. Consider approval to extend the original bid for the Department of Public Works rooftop units replacement project. Adam, thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you. So in February, I came to the board to recommend awarding the overall low bid to Eastside Mechanical for the replacement of one of the five RTUs that comprises the DPW HVAC system. For this fiscal year, a second RTU replacement, the DPW building is part of the approved budget. Eastside Mechanical is willing to extend the original bid to the second RTU. This would not only save thousands of dollars on the second unit, but it will drop the cost of the original bid from $64,185 to $62,220 per unit replaced. The cost savings is found largely by only having to stage a crane once for both units. The original bids range from $64,000 to over $95,000. The cost for the purchase and installation of each unit would be $62,220, and falls under the $70,000 that was budgeted. At this time, we recommend acceptance of extending the overall low bid for Eastside Mechanical to the second RTU in the amount of $62,220.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I just appreciate you guys taking the time. This is just being fiscally responsible, making sure that if we see synergy savings, or see an opportunity to save some money for the residents, we're able to do that. We're going to do this improvement anyways, so it just gives us an opportunity to save some more money to do hopefully other improvements and other investments in the township. So thank you.
And thanks for staying so late.
Being patient and waiting.
My best, I thought it would.
Pretty good. Anyone want to make a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Support by, motion by Kalinsky, support by Murray, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries six, zero.
Thank you.
Clear in the room here.
Yes, we are. Paul, Warren, who's going to tell us about the next two?
Three.
Three items.
Three.
Oh, thank you so much for being here. First item, number 26, consider approval of the 2024 MicroSeal contract.
Good evening, board. I'm here to present the contract award for the 2024 MicroSeal project. A MicroSeal is a thin surface treatment that is applied to asphalt roadways to adjust minor cracking and surface wear. This process is specifically designed to extend the lifespan of asphalt roadways in fair to good condition, very similar to the, the Cape Seal that, that I presented the last, or two board meetings ago. The evaluation and prioritization of the roads for repair fall under the responsibility of the DPW Road Division foreman and staff. Based on the road division's evaluation, this project will consist of applying the MicroSeal product to about four miles of roadway located in various areas throughout the township. One key thing to note on this MicroSeal product is, we're able to do, you know, whole, whole areas, like whole neighborhoods, like say a dead-end cul-de-sac, we do the whole dead-end cul-de-sac, it wouldn't be like section here, section here. So whole neighborhoods will be able to benefit from this. This, this is, this is the first time we're going to attempt this, we've seen it done, so it's kind of a pilot program, but it's gotten great reviews. It, the, it lasts, they say six to eight years, very similar, or five to eight years, very similar to the Cape Seal, but with our pavement preservation program, I, you know, we're confident that this can extend the lives even longer. It's also important to note that this process is being utilized in areas that would not have received any pavement preservation work if not for this program, because it is designed for fair conditions, where our preservation is more for like, you know, overlays or, or asphalt paving when they're in worse condition. So this helps prolong them from getting to the worst condition. With this program, our limited dollars are being employed to maximize pavement preservation. This will not reduce any other pavement preservation projects. After a thorough bidding process, we received one bid for this project from Pavement Maintenance Systems LLC, emerging as the lowest and only bidder. Therefore, it is our recommendation that the contract be awarded to Pavement Maintenance Systems LLC for a budget amount not to exceed $300,000. Thank you for your attention, and I invite any questions.
Thank you. Questions? I see there's four miles that are on this?
Yeah, so with, with this product, the, the Cape Seal, we're able to do 1.7 miles, two, two miles-ish, with this stuff can stretch a lot farther. And a benefit with this is, is once they, there, there's no waiting, there may be like a couple hours wait, and once they, they put that, that code on it, there, you can drive on it. So they basically lay it out, I want to say maybe it's a couple hours wait after that, but after, once they're off the road, you can drive on it immediately.
Great. Mark, just one.
Go ahead. Sorry. So I know there's only one bid on it, you said you've seen this done in the past, or in recent time, was it done by this company? And were you able to vet this company to make sure that other?
Correct, yes. MDOT actually uses this company as well.
Perfect, that was my only question.
Yeah, a good question, because I was going to ask the same question.
And with that, since you have no question, I would like to make a motion to go forward with the contract to prove up to $300,000 for this MicroSeal project. Support.
Motion by Kalinsky, support by Barnett, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you for that. Okay, Paul, number two, 27, consider approval of the 2024 asphalt replacement contract.
Again, I'm here to present the contract award for the 2024 asphalt replacement programs. This is something we have done in the past for many years. Same as I said with the MicroSeal, the evaluation, it's done by the road foreman and the crew, they're the guys out there doing the work, they're the ones potholing throughout the, the year, they're analyzing the roads, so they have the best knowledge of which roads fit in which pavement preservation process. And based on the road division's evaluation for this year's project, this year's project will consist of resurfacing about three miles of roads throughout the township, using a total of 4,175 tons of asphalt. Now, this is complete, this is paving. After a thorough process, we received eight bids for this project, with Hutch Paving Incorporated emerging as the lowest bidder. Therefore, it is our recommendation that we contract, that, that the contract be awarded to Hutch Paving Incorporated for a budget amount not to exceed $650,000. Again, thank you for your attention, and I invite any questions.
And again, you're familiar with them, or?
Yes.
Okay. And again, when you say lowest bid, it's lowest qualified bid.
Lowest qualified, correct.
So they are able to meet all of our expectations, or that bid process, or they'll meet the standards that we have set forth for our roads?
Yep. Yep.
Make a motion, we approve.
Support.
Motion by Barnett, support by Kalinsky, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
And this is also complimentary to our in-house paving as well. We still do that as well, so.
Okay. Almost done. Number 28, consider approval of the 2024 concrete repair and replacement contract.
Um, I'm, I'm here to present the contract award for the 2024 concrete repair and replacement program. Again, as with the asphalt paving, this was something that has been done for many years in the past. And based on the road division's evaluation, this year's project will consist of replacing 2,261 square yards of concrete on local roads throughout the township. Now, that these ones are severe damaged areas that they will saw cut out and replace in place. So we, the foreman had mapped out certain areas that are the worst of the worst. So it's not like the asphalt where, where the whole road's getting done or whatnot. So these are just certain sections that are in horrible condition. After the thorough bidding process, we received 13 bids for this project with Zuniga, I actually think it's pronounced with a, with a S sound, Suniga. Cement Construction Inc. emerging as the lowest qualified bidder. It is our recommendation that the contract be awarded to Suniga Cement Construction Inc. for a budget amount not to exceed $250,000. Again, thank you for your attention, and I do invite any questions.
Make a motion, we approve, as presented.
Support.
Barnett and Kalinsky again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Lot of roads, lot of roads today here.
Yeah, right?
Everybody's getting a road.
Roads and lakes.
Right, roads and lakes. That's, that's... Item 29, approve payroll and vouchers for April 24th, 2024.
So moved.
Support. Motion by Murray, support by Barnett, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Martin's favorite.
And who would like to mo, make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Key, support by Kalinsky, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries, we are adjourned.